Vice President Diane Nicolet.
Good morning.
I am here. Our student probably will not be here. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
All right. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Mayberry?
Good morning.
Trustee Church?
Yes.
We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I also want to acknowledge incoming Superintendent Dr. Enfield is joining us via Zoom. And so she's on and has been for our meeting, so certainly want to acknowledge her as well. Why don't we go ahead and stand for our pledge? And we have an associate of Mr. Anthony Hall who's here with us. And so welcome, sir. We're going to have you lead us in the pledge. Just get started and we'll join in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much and thank you for being here. We're going to have just a little bit of a reorder. We have an appeal item that we want to go ahead and get to first. We're going to begin with agenda item 2.04. 2.04, I'll go ahead and call that. It is, I see staff getting in place, thank you. Ms. Sullivan, discussion impossible action for disposition of appeal to letter of intent to award request for qualifications or RFQS number 34-dash-QS-dash-09-dash-22-dash-AA Engineering Services for the Washoe County School District by Shaw Engineering Incorporated. And this is for action, and Ms. Sullivan is before us. So good morning.
Good morning. President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, Board of Trustees. My name is Andrea Sullivan for the record. I am the Director of Procurement and Contracts. So we are here today to hopefully get a decision on an appeal that we have received from Shaw Engineering with respect to our RFQS for engineering services. So that RFQS was issued to create a pool of engineers that we can choose from when we have a particular project that we want to have designed. The way these appeals have normally worked before the board is that I come up, I give you sort of a background, including a timeline of the process. And after I get done with that, you can ask me these questions. And then we'll invite the appellant up, who's represented today by Cody Black, who's the chief, or I'm sorry, the principal engineer at Shaw Engineering. He'll come up and give his side of the story, his perspective, and the reasons why he thinks that you should grant the appeal. And then you can ask any questions of him. And once he's done, I'll come back up in case anything that he has said has caused you to have any further questions of me. And then after that, we'll ask you to discuss, deliberate, and render the final decision on the appeal. So unless you have any other questions, I can go ahead and get started.
I think we're okay. Dr. Nicolet, your mic is on. You have a question? No, no, no. Okay, please, go right ahead.
Okay, great. So the request for qualifications, and we call it an RFQS, was issued on September 28th, 2021. Proposals were due and publicly opened on November 10th. During that public opening, it was noted publicly that Shaw Engineering was missing certain documents. So when we do a public opening, we acknowledge certain things during the public opening, and it was acknowledged that they were missing documents. In fact, they were missing all of the documents that we require to be signed and turned in with a bid or proposal. So those documents include that they did not have their signed signature page, they did not have the signed public disclosure form, which is required to disclose any potential conflicts they might have. And then there were three addenda issued during the RFQS, and they are required to sign those addenda, acknowledge them, acknowledge that everything in the addenda has been incorporated into the RFQS and return those. So they were missing all three of the required documents that we say are required. I do want to note that in four sections of the RFQS, we make clear that an unsigned proposal will be rejected. We say it on the very first page in red italic print. We say it in section 1.1 and section 46 in bold. And then finally, in section 53, which is the actual signature page, we say it right in front of where they're supposed to sign, that if they don't turn it in signed, it will be rejected. On November 11th, the day after the public opening, Shaw Engineering did email April Anderson, who is the senior buyer that was in charge of this RFQS, and she's also here in the audience today, should you have any questions of her. They emailed her the signed missing documents. So a day after proposals were due, they emailed the signed missing documents and noted that they would deliver the original documents the following day. We were closed on the 11th for Veterans Day, so when we came back to work on the 12th, April Anderson notified Shaw Engineering that their proposal was rejected because of the lack of signature. Immediately following that, Shaw indicated to April that they would be appealing this decision as soon as the appeal window was opened. And the appeal window is opened after a letter of intent or a recommendation of award is issued. So from there, the RFQS process, which is lengthy, ensued. So, and it followed, it went on without consideration for their proposal because their proposal had been rejected. So we went through, we received 46 proposals, so there was a lot of interest generated in this project. And the Office of Business and Finance had to review 44 sets of financial statements. Then we had to give the committee time to review and read all 43 by now. We had a proposer fail the financial review. So 43 proposals went to the committee, and they took, had to read every single one of them. And then we had committee meeting where we had to discuss all 43 remaining proposals. So I guess what I'm saying is this process took longer than it normally does because of the sheer number of proposals received. But it progressed, and then on March 31st, a letter of intent recommending 32 firms of the 43 they reviewed be awarded into the pool. And issuing that letter of intent opened the appeal window. Before the appeal window was closed, and in compliance with the appeal process outlined in the RFQS, Shaw Engineering did submit a letter of appeal. They submitted that through their attorney on April 7th. And once a notice of appeal is received, it acts as a stay of award. So we don't award, we don't move forward with any award until we have either resolved the appeal internally, or until we bring it to the board to render its final decision. And that's why we're here today, is to have you render that final decision. It has been through our entire appeal process, and this is sort of the last stop, and you make the final decision. The crux of their appeal is that not signing the documents was simply a clerical error. They acknowledged they didn't sign or include in their bid package any of the required documents. But they do say that it was a clerical error, and that they included a letter of enclosure, as they call it, we often call it a letter of interest with their proposal, and they did sign that letter, and that by signing that letter, it formed their intent to be bound by the terms of the RFQS. So the first step in the appeal process, once we receive a timely notice of appeal, is that the Director of Procurement and Contracts, which is me, I review the entire process. So April Anderson was the buyer in charge of it. I take a look at what was the process, what was the timeline? I read the RFQ document itself. I read, obviously, the letter of appeal from their attorney. I went through every issue that they raised in their letter, and just took a look at the process. And when I reviewed it, what I found was the process was sound, it was fair, and it was consistent with past practices of the department. And I think that's really, really important. We want proposers and bidders to know that when they submit a bid or a proposal, that we're going to treat them the same, and we're going to be fair, and we're going to be consistent. I don't obviously want to show bias towards any one company, then I'm willing to say, even though I said it four times in my document, that your proposal will be rejected. Since we know you and we respect you, we'll go ahead and accept yours where we have rejected others. So it's really important. I know the Office of General Counsel has impressed upon me that the consistency is really the key. What have you done in these previous situations where they've come up? And so, once I reviewed all that and looked at the consistency of our practice, I issued a letter to Shaw and their attorney on April 11th denying their appeal. So the next step in the process is that if the appellant wishes to proceed, is they can go to what we call an internal appeals committee. So that is a committee made up of district staff outside of the purchasing department. So we get some people that are knowledgeable in the law and/or knowledgeable in bidding practices, but are not in my department, so that we can get educated eyes looking on it from a fresh perspective. I want them to look at what I've done, what my people have done, and you know, from a very outside look to say, hey Andrea, I see there might be a flaw in your process here, and here's what we think. So we want to know that information. And Shaw did notify us that they wanted to proceed to the appeals committee. So the appeals committee met, and consisted of our chief financial officer, our chief operations officer, and our deputy chief general counsel. And they met on April 14th. They reviewed all the pertinent documents. They were able to ask some questions of me. And ultimately, they also determined unanimously to deny the appeal, and they issued a letter to Shaw in that respect on the April 28th. On April 29th, Shaw notified the purchasing department that they would like to have their appeal heard by the Board of Trustees, who will render the final decision. So that's sort of a timeline of events, so you know what happened. And as I mentioned earlier, the crux of their appeal is that while they absolutely acknowledge that they did not include the required documents, that the omissions of those documents were simply a clerical error, and by providing those documents the next day, we should continue to consider their proposal. I do want to say that if we had considered something like that a clerical error, we would not have put it in four different sections of the RFP in bold and sometimes red italic print. We don't try to hide the fact that a signature is required. We try to make it as noticeable as possible, so that everybody knows how, the rules of the solicitation. And Shaw has participated in solicitations before and has properly turned in their signed documents in the past. And you know, part of forming a binding contract is they have to have an offer and an acceptance. And when you don't sign that RFQS document, there is nothing binding their proposal. There's nothing requiring them to honor what was in their proposal. And further, when they sign a bid or an RFQS, they are testing to the fact that number one, they are an authorized signer of the company, and that number two, they are agreeing to all the terms and conditions set forth in the RFQS. And it's important. There's a lot of legal terms and conditions in there. They have to understand them. They have to understand what standard they'll be held to, and they have to understand what we do. And by not signing it, there's no acknowledgement there that they are binding themselves to the terms and conditions of the RFQS. And while they did submit a letter of enclosure, as they call it, nothing in that letter suggests that they are going to be bound to the terms of the RFQS. You know, I've been here with the district for over 14 years. This issue specifically has been vetted with the Office of General Counsel on numerous occasions. It is not the first time someone has not signed their submission. And so, you know, we often have reached out to them, you know, over the years, to make sure that this is still how they want to do it, and that we're conducting ourselves in a proper way. And over the years, with guidance from the Office of General Counsel, we have strengthened our language in the RFQS and other solicitation documents to make clear what the rules are, because we're not trying to trick people, we're not trying to get them on a technicality. But signing a bid proposal is kind of standard operating procedures with agencies. This is what is required by most, if not all, agencies in this area and across the country. And I think it warrants saying again that we've been very consistent on this issue, and treating Shaw differently than we treat other bidders could have larger ramifications, right? We had a lot of interest in this project, and the proposers that followed the rules were on the call when we opened the bid. They are aware that Shaw was missing their paperwork. And if we now say in four places in our document that your submission will be rejected, and then we take them, now we have, they have an issue now. And they could come back and appeal this because they weren't treated fairly, and they played by the rules. And I think the fact that we say it so many times in so many ways makes clear that we don't see it as a clerical error if you don't submit it. We are allowed to have rules for our solicitations. That's a normal thing. And sometimes it may or may not be in addition to what the law requires. But having a signature is not something new or unusual in this area. And I think it's important to say that in the document, we don't say it may be rejected, because sometimes we have a little latitude. There is something in the law that says, you know, clerical errors or, you know, slight omissions can be overlooked. But we made super clear to say it will be rejected, and not that it may be rejected. And so we wanted to make sure that everybody knew what would happen. I also want to say that we have gone above and beyond in the solicitation, and our S332 does not require that we issue any sort of solicitation for these types of service. They are specifically exempt from the bidding requirements. We're doing it, however, because we think it's the right thing to do. We like to engage in competition. We like to make sure everybody has an opportunity to participate, right? If we're just going and awarding contract to whomever we want, it may start to look like we have favorites. And so we want to make sure this is open to everyone, that everyone knows the rules, and everyone has a fair chance to compete. Further, it helps ensure that we are spending taxpayer monies wisely, which is absolutely something I'm passionate about. Further, because this is exempt from the bidding requirements of NRS332, we are under no obligation to open an appeal window or to even have this process, because it's exempt from the bidding requirements. But I do feel strongly that when I, once I issue a formal solicitation, even if I'm not required to, I go ahead and open that appeal window, because I think it's only fair that proposers and bidders have an opportunity to say, hey, I think you did something wrong. So we've gone above and beyond. We have researched this issue internally and with the Office of General Counsel. And in this specific case, we broke no law, we did nothing wrong, we made clear what the rules of engagement were, and we have consistently treated our bidders and proposers with respect to this issue exactly the same. So with that, we are recommending that this appeal be denied. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have now, or you can save them until after the appellant has had an opportunity to speak.
Trustee Church?
I have a few questions. So from the time that that was submitted till the time that we opened the bids, what was that timeline?
From the time that the proposals were received?
Yeah, before Veterans Day, when they turned it in.
So the proposals, I don't know the exact date off the top of my head that Shaw submitted their proposals. I can tell you, we don't get, we get the proposals usually the same day, and sometimes a day or two earlier, but usually the same day, and they are kept sealed, and they are unsealed during the public bid opening.
And that would, what ballpark? We talking weeks, months?
So from the time that they turned in their proposal to the time the bid opened was probably the same day or one or two days later.
Later, okay. I can hold my other questions for now, then.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Church.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Yep. I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Cody Black up here from Shaw Engineering, and then I'll come back after he's done.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Black. You can sit or stand, whichever you prefer.
I can sit, less chance of falling over.
Yeah, well, yeah. Hopefully, anyway.
Hopefully. Hey, thank you for your time today. Again, my name is Cody Black. I'm the president and principal engineer at Shaw Engineering. Lot of information there to go over for some pretty basic stuff, but I wanted to start, you know, I start with something that I think came up as like the most, you know, thing that stood out to me with what Ms. Sullivan went over was, you know, spending taxpayer money. You know, I'm a citizen here. My kids go to Washoe County schools. That's, you know, very important to me. I'm also an engineer, and I am acutely aware of this process. I'm also acutely aware of the engineers that are available in our community to provide good engineering services to represent, you know, our children, which is what we're all here for. So selecting the best engineer that we can, that can do the job the most efficiently and protect the district, and kind of consider all those things, is paramount. And in my opinion, the best way to know that is through reviewing the experience of an engineer, and looking at what their history is, serving the school district, history serving other cities and counties, and utilities, and private entities throughout the state and throughout the country. So that's what engineers, in my opinion, should be selected on. This, I understand the document and the, you know, error of not signing it. I was dumbfounded when I, you know, realized that. I, you know, actually, a funny story. I went to lunch, we were compiling the documents, I went to grab a sandwich. We didn't have to have it in for hours. I came back, and you know, my office manager said, oh, I said, hey, where'd you go? She said, oh, I packaged it up, I'm headed down to deliver it. I was like, hey, great, you got people that take care of the stuff. Good deal. You know, we did not pause and do a final look through of that. That's an error on our part to, in every proposal we do, I do flip through that document and just, you know, do one last check. We're all busy right now, as you guys know. We're all short-staffed, trying to get a lot of work done. So prior to that day of submitting and signing, you know, Shaw Engineering did spend countless hours going through, reviewing all of the technical portions of this RFQS process. They wanted to know our project history, our staff, you know, abilities, capabilities, background of our firm, the services that we can provide. So it's a lengthy document that we do spend hours, you know, preparing. For us to spend all that staff hours and then turn it in and have absolutely zero intention of meeting terms of the contract is just kind of silly. I mean, why would we spend all of our time going through it if we didn't, if we didn't have that intent? So, and our letter of interest did clearly state the subject was RFQS, our intent to submit it. Immediately upon finding this error, we printed the documents, we signed them, we emailed them over. I think the next day, we could deliver them. They were, you know, close for Veterans Day. We got the hard copies down immediately. So before any of these proposals had been reviewed by anyone at the district, we, you know, we had submitted those documents. In addition, this has only been done twice for selecting engineers, so this is the second time that the school district has gone through this for selecting engineers. So, you know, Shaw Engineering, we've been, I think our first job with the district was actually at the inception of our firm in 1981, when George Shaw started it. So we've been doing work for the school district for, you know, seems like forever, before I was born, actually. So, you know, there's, and then two years ago, we submitted all the documents, we signed them. There's clearly that we were, you know, bound by the conditions of that. Those conditions had very minor changes from, you know, two and a half years ago to now. So I'll just run through a couple of quick bullet items I want to make sure I touch on, and then, you know, and then I'm available for any questions. But obviously, I'm here today to request that our appeal be approved. We've done, been doing work for the district since 1981. I want to stress, there's no laws in NRS, there's not even Nevada Administrative Code that stopped this board from granting this appeal. This RFQS process is an administrative process that's been developed by the purchasing department, and there's no laws that are, you know, stopping this appeal from going forward. This award is not for one contract. So, you know, this is the opportunity of any jobs for over two years. I think the current list has been active going close to two and a half years. So this isn't, Shaw Engineering loses one opportunity for one project, and we'll get it next time, maybe. You know, this is opportunity possibly for multiple projects. And there's, and just like there's nothing that requires the district to put out this RFQS process, if, you know, if you guys experience more staffing shortages administratively, you could decide to just continue this current RFQS list as long as you want. You could actually use this list in perpetuity. And there's no laws that require you to go back out. So we see this as a two-year loss of work, and we also see this as a high risk for an unknown, you know, number of years of being able to provide services for the district. We're well qualified to perform a variety of engineering services. I don't think there's any doubt with that. We've performed great services for, for the district in the past, and we, you know, we're continuing to do so. And we provide the same services for many municipalities around. Again, this is only the second time that engineering qualifications to do engineering or architecture work for the district has been selected in this manner. And prior to that, it was staff knowing who was out there in the field, or if an engineer maybe opened up a shop in, you know, the area, they could submit a letter, get to know whoever, and say, hey, we'd like the opportunity. And then it was just on a project-by-project basis that staff would just decide who, you know, which firm they would like to select. And then again, about two and a half years ago, almost three years ago now, they changed that process. So when they changed that process, they wanted to make it more uniform, open it up, and have just an established list. Some municipalities do that. I don't, I would not fault anyone for doing that. With the purchasing department, when they created that list, they basically took something similar to what we would do for, you know, a construction bid, where, you know, which is bound by a lot of laws, right? We have NRS338, NRS332, which requires many items to be submitted. You know, if you're going to use subcontractors, you have to list who they are, if, you know, who your material suppliers are. So you're bound by a lot of flaws. So they took that process, and they said, hey, we're going to select qualifications based, so they took that similar format and applied it. The process and format for this is all administrative. Again, I just want to stress that. And so, you know, this has been, you know, not manipulated, but changed from being for a construction competitive bid to being a qualifications-based bid. There could have been no signatures on this document, it would have had the same intent. There could, and we have some that we submit, and there's no signatures required. Some folks have a standard form where you have to, you can only write in the boxes. So it's totally administrative. I know that there is some, you know, mention of by granting our appeal somehow is unfair to the other proposers. So everyone has the opportunity to appeal it. I think, I heard there was like one other firm that didn't sign one document. They just chose not to appeal it. But I don't really understand, I mean, us having an extra day to sign three forms, I don't really see any advantage that our firm gains out of that. That doesn't seem like a plausible argument that, oh, you know, it's not like we saved hours of time. We didn't save tons of money by, you know, not signing it. We're talking, I can sign three documents in, you know, 20 seconds, you know. So, so again, I don't really see any way that this is unfair to our firm. I mean, I understand you guys want to follow your process. I agree, that's good. We should all have uniform processes. When it comes to qualification-based selections, and you have no laws, you should be looking at just the best qualifications of, you know, who the best engineers are. And your qualified staff who decides that never had the opportunity to even read how good we are as engineers. So they never had, you know, we never got pushed forward. So with that, you know, I'm requesting, I do a couple of things. A lot of work did go into this response. As soon as we saw that it was missing, we, you know, did as much as we could, as fast as we could to get those documents down. Obviously, they weren't accepted still, because they were considered late. There is a lengthy list, as she was saying, but there's a lot of disciplines covered. So when we say 34 engineers, I, probably sounds like, well, we got 34 others to choose from. It's not really the case. There's really only a handful of the specialized services that Shaw Engineering typically provides. And so we don't really have 34 competitors in here. There's only a couple. And you guys don't ever have to choose us, even if we're on the list. But if you think we're the best ones for that job, there might be a job that comes up where we have, you know, we've, we've done three other projects on that school, and we could therefore, you know, really streamline the engineering and save the district money. But, you know, you guys would not be able to use, I apologize for saying you guys, I speak in front of boards, it's bad. The district would not be able to choose us to take advantage of any of those, you know, efficiencies, just simply because two years ago, we didn't sign three forms. So the, I don't want to say it's draconian, but it's like, well, you didn't check the box, so you're not allowed in, Timmy. You know, it's, that's a little, you can look at it, and you do feel like that a little bit. I mean, so this is really administrative. We see this as a clerical, I understand the document did say that it had to be signed. We had no intent to not sign these documents. And, you know, we, our cover letter stated that we were submitting on this, the document was complete, our qualifications were in there. And, you know, there's, again, I don't see us getting any favorable or unfair advantage by these documents being signed late. If we tried to submit the entire proposal late, then that makes sense. We had extra days at that point to submit. So, you know, the timeline of, you know, there's a couple ways that could go forward. You just grant our appeal, then our qualifications could go back and be reviewed against all the others. You know, if there's a way to open this list up, some municipalities actually just open the list anytime. They might open it once a quarter. They might just say, submit it anytime, and, you know, here's the form. And, you know, if you get, you know, qualified engineers that move into the area, they're available, or whatever, you know, folks split off from other firms, and you want to keep working with them, you could just have an ongoing acceptance. You could open it quarterly, you could have it open anytime, and then another one comes in, routed around, so everybody think, looks good, okay. You know, or you could just allow, you know, any miscellaneous district forms to be submitted anytime, rather than binding them to, to the timeline. So it seems like, you know, kind of putting up this roadblock of like, you got to make sure you sign all purchasing documents before you get in the door. It just, it doesn't seem like we're assessing the same, you know, review of who actually is the most qualified to do the work. So, you know, I, I don't want to take up more of your time, because all this time is precious for the district. So I appreciate everyone's consideration, and, you know, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Black. We will bring it back here to the dice if there are any questions from Mr. Black. Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Sir, so you said that some bids don't require signatures. Is that with the Washoe County School District?
No, just generally speaking of other government entities that have qualifications lists like this.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Trustee.
Can I hear that one more time? They do, or they don't?
I'm sorry, Trustee Church?
Could I, sorry, could I hear that? They do, or they don't, other agencies? They do or they don't, other agencies?
Other, there are multiple agencies that will have a similar type of list that don't have required signatures on their forms. So, some of them are just, here's a form, fill it in and email it over.
Okay, so, some do, some don't.
Some do.
It varies.
Exactly.
Is that clear, Trustee Church? It varies. Okay. I, I'm going to add, first of all, let me say thank you for the work that you've done for the district, because it sounds like it's been a longstanding relationship, and that you've done a really good job with that. I'll be honest, I'm struggling a little bit with this. I think it's, I love our, our local businesses, and I love our partnerships, that's been ongoing. But, rules are rules, so I'm struggling, I want to be very honest with you, Mr. Black, okay? And, and I do have a concern that if exceptions are made, then exceptions are expected to be made. And in this case, certainly, I understand what happened, that's absolutely unfortunate. Man go get a sandwich, right? And it turned things around, but someone else might have something, hey, we just did, and then it just kind of, I can imagine, it could become a little bit unwieldy, so I want you to understand, I'm struggling with this. And that's why, not because of the qualifications of your firm, it's stellar. I, I was around in 1981 when it was, it was established, but it's been around for, I was going to say for a long time, yikes. Well, anyway, it's really done great work, but I just, that's, that's, that's a big concern that I have, is if we have requirements that are, that are in place, whether the requirements that may seem frivolous, right, on, on the outside or to those who are participating, they're being applied across the board, and, and to begin to make exceptions is to begin to get away from the process. And as you say, processes are important, and that, and that gets a little unwieldy. So, that's, that's why I'm struggling, so I want to be honest with you on that, that's why I'm struggling.
I, I fully agree, and I can appreciate that. For qualifications-based selections, I think that there should be exceptions. I mean, I think we are not talking about the competitive bid, we're not talking about meeting laws, we're talking about qualifications-based selections. You guys could throw qualifications-based selections out tomorrow, you could keep them in for 100 years. So, the district has complete freedom of that administrative process, and there is nothing that binds any laws. There's not, there's no law I can rely on to make sure that we have this opportunity again, but there's also no law that forces this district to select us, to waive a signature, to let it be submitted late. So, this is all an administrative process.
No, I understand.
So, I mean, it's, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, and I guess my view, because we do deal with these qualifications for all the municipalities that we deal with, is that it should be a, I don't want to call it informal, because a qualification should be tight, showing what projects you've done, who your staff is, all that should be rigorous, it should be reviewed with scrutiny, that's extremely important. Everything around the edges of that process, in my opinion, should be, you know, it should be a softer type of relationship to where, hey, we reviewed it, submit this document, you go back and forth. Because when we perform projects for the district, we don't submit a hard dollar price. It is constantly a back-and-forth of communications, of exceptions, of alterations, of changes. And so, I don't expect you to change all of your purchasing guidelines for me, or just for this project. But, in general, for qualifications-based selections, I think that eliminating these rigorous requirements are important. Things like mundane signatures on documents, those documents are important, and if I refuse to sign them, you should not hire me. I completely agree with that. But I would make the same argument to every municipality that we deal with, is that review our qualifications, see if we're the best, documents and forms will work together and make sure you have what you need, and that is what I believe the process should be for all municipalities that we work with. So, I, I hear what you're saying, but on qualifications-based selections, it's much different than competitive bid. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make these arguments for competitive bid, but...
I, I understand, I'm going to jump in because...
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So, it's, I'm with, again, being honest, right? It sounds like what you're saying is that if I'm good enough, I don't have to follow the rules.
No, not at all.
Okay, that, that, that's what it sounds like, because there's something that you feel like is extra. And I don't think we want to get into a situation like that, right? I do, I do think that, hang, hang on.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I do think that you're good. I, I, I don't know that personally, but you, you, you've been in a relationship with us for a very long time, and firms like that, you have to be good to be around that long. But I, but I do think it's a, it's a little more than if, if we're that good, and if we miss something, that should be okay, because I don't think that's fair, even though it isn't about what the law requires us to do. It's that we, that if there's some rules that we have, we're requiring that of ourselves or our staff is, and it's a matter, and you're asking us to, even though we aren't bound by law, to say, hey, staff, we know that you've done this. And so, our job here is to find, is there a reason to go against that? And that's what our, our process is here, and, and I don't think it's because you're really, really good. I think just out of fairness, I would need something a little bit more than that. Again, I just, I just want to be honest. And this is not, isn't that at all, but I think it's really, I think it's, it's fair for you to know kind of what we're thinking as we're deliberating, and so I'm just being fair and kind of, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not solid, I see some other lights on, so I certainly want to hear from, from my colleagues on this, but I just want you to know kind of where my struggle is, okay?
I understand, I appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Dr. Nicolet, I saw you, and then I saw the clerk, and then we just keep working our way around, if that's okay?
Welcome, Mr. Black.
Yes.
And thank you for the work in the past, we, I really appreciate that. And I, I'm not an engineer, and yet I do not question the qualifications, because I, I know about Shaw Engineering, and thank you for that. You mentioned several phrases that I keep going back to, that I think are very important and very honest, and I thank you for that. You said, "This is basic stuff." It really is basic stuff. Signatures are basic stuff. And you referenced that we didn't pause, and that's true. I think that's an honest statement of, you know, dang, why didn't I review these? And, and it is, it's basic stuff, and, and the organization didn't pause to ensure that everything was together. It, and, and you're acutely aware of the process. And to me, that's key, when you said, and I quote, "We are acutely aware of the process," then signatures become very vital, because as, as we know, that really is an intent, and it's a legal intent. It was totally administrative on both, on both entities' parts, Washoe County School District and Shaw, Shaw Electric. It was administrative. And Washoe County is doing their due diligence to make sure that, and I quote, "It sound fair and consistent," and, and that is extremely important to all of us, I believe, to all of us. And so, it being totally administrative means that there was a gap in administrative process on Shaw's end. Yes, it seems very small, a signature, and it really, it really tugs at my heart to know that, you know, you have employees and families, and we're, we're a community, and yet, the process, you, you missed part of the process that you are acutely aware of.
Thank you, Vice President Nicolet. Clerk Menedo, and then we'll go to Trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here. This is such an unfortunate situation. However, I believe that we need, in, we need to support the process we have in place and our staff, and we, in my opinion, we need to go by the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Menedo. Trustee Rodriguez, and then Trustee Smith.
I'll save a lot of my deliberating comments later, but I just want to know, what other projects have you done for like the state, local entities, and the school district? I'm sure, I'm sure there's a few, like, you know, last...
Yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, Battleborn Youth Academy is a pretty cool project we have right now, rehabbing the wastewater treatment plant, that's for, you know, the, they closed down some of the, you know, kind of juvenile type of schools throughout the state, and so, the Office of the Military through the state, they had to, you know, rehab the school, and they needed someone to work on the wastewater treatment plant, they brought us in for that. We have a lot of projects with Endow right now, City of Fernley, we're doing two lift stations, which is why I had to take this meeting of a pre-bid for City of Reno for lift station rehabilitation projects. So, we, we kind of specialize in just the water and wastewater environments, we don't really do parking lots and site grading and things like that. We, we dabble in them for like new construction, but we're mainly about rehabbing older, you know, older stuff. So, we kind of specialize in the water and wastewater side, which translates into pipelines, pump stations, irrigation systems. Worcester High School Irrigation Project has been probably our largest project in many years for the district, it's been going well, so...
And how many other companies around here do what your company does?
I would say that specialize in water and wastewater, you know, probably about four, you know, four to five, maybe.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. We'll go to Trustee Smith, and then Trustee Church.
Thank you, President Taylor. I believe that my questions are actually for Ms. Sullivan, if that's okay?
Okay, would you, we can, no, no, we can do them at the same time, that's just fine, please, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. So, my first question is, have we ever rejected an RFP or RFQS in this case, for lack of a signature?
Yes, on a number of occasions over the years, we have, and in fact, in this particular pool, we had another firm that did not sign their bid document, and in that case, they submitted the forms, they were just unsigned, versus in Shaw's circumstances, didn't submit the forms at all, and we did reject their proposal as well. But, on a number of occasions, I mean, it's not every solicitation, obviously, but over the 14 years, I've had this come up several times. We have sought counsel from the Office of General Counsel on many occasions on this issue, and that's how it kind of got to where we are today, we're very consistent with that. And so, I cannot recall a time since receiving the guidance from the Office of General Counsel where we have accepted an unsigned bid.
Thank you. One other thing, and I am really struggling with this too, I really am. A little bit of background, I've done RFPs for more than 10 years in a previous role within my company, so I'm really, really aware of these two. One thing that does intrigue me, though, that Mr. Black brought up, is that because this entire process is self-determined from the district, meaning that we're not bound by NRS, we're doing this, and by the way, I completely support that. I love the fact that we're being open and transparent, so I fully support the fact that we're going above and beyond by opening it up. I am very intrigued by the idea that we could, at some point in the future, offer an addendum to this, and maybe I'm not using the right words, but another opportunity for businesses to then join this ongoing list. And it's not just because of Shaw Engineering, but there may be new businesses that come to town, there may be people that go off on their own and create their own businesses. Has there been any thought to, since we are doing this for our own reasons, having an ongoing process where we may add to the list at certain intervals?
So, I will say, you know, this is the second time we've done this pool. The way we normally do it, I am aware that there are some agencies that do it a little differently, the way we normally do it, we, we have a pool that's been in place since 2019, so about three years. And our intent is to award to a pool, we know who the pool is, we've done a fair process, and then we issue another one in a timely manner, right? You're right, it could, he's right, it could be 100 years before we issue it, right? It's not the way we do things here, but it could be 100 years. This last one was three years, and it was two and a half between the time we awarded and we reissued the new one. The problem with that is trying to get a committee together that often to review and evaluate all of the proposals that come in. If I just open up some ongoing process, like, when does that meet, how often does it meet? It is ridiculously difficult to even schedule these committee meetings with everybody's time and schedules that they have, and so, the process is difficult. It has, it is something we have briefly discussed in the past, we decided not to do it, but it's something we could consider in the future, but it was not part of this particular RFQS.
And in a situation like that, all of the previously accepted applicants would not need to resubmit, it would be an opportunity to add to the pool as opposed to reconfirm who's in it previously, okay?
Correct, right. Versus the way we do it where we issue like every three years, then they have to resubmit, right? But if we were to have some sort of ongoing process, that's correct, the awarded ones would not have to resubmit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. We'll go to Trustee Church, and then over to Trustee Mayberry.
Thank you, yeah. A few questions, I'm glad you're sitting up there. One comment, in reading all the documents the other night, getting ready for this, one thing that stands out, and it's a quote here from Shaw, "This situation was truly an oversight by Shaw and internal miscue." So, I feel really bad, you know, I can picture this, and obviously, people's livelihood is involved in this, but it was Shaw's miscue, it wasn't anything the school district did. What really concerns me, probably the number one thing, Ms. Sullivan, if you can tell me if I'm wrong, if people don't submit the doc, the signature, and then things get opened in a public forum, or things get opened, they can back out, they're going, oh, we didn't sign anything, so, we changed our mind, yeah, we, we bid really low, forget it, we're going to come back. Am I missing something there?
No, I agree, that's part of, that's part of my issue with it, is that they're not bound to it because they haven't signed the document attesting that they are going to be bound by the terms and conditions of the RFQS, and so...
If I can clarify, you said we...
Mr., you want to jump in, you're right?
Well, just right off what you just, you said, we bid too low?
No, no, he, he just gave that as an example.
Hypothetical.
Yeah, that's why I was stressing qualifications, because nothing's about price.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I'll, if I had to grade your presentation, Mr. Black, I'll give you an A+. I mean, you really twisted my arm here, I just, like the Board President and everybody else so far, it's the rules, and, as well as opening the door to other problems down the road, you know, if we, if we deviate. I'd love to chat with you about wastewater, it really is fascinating subject. And the other thought in my mind, it may not be relevant, but we're transitioning, because again, it's on the agenda today and other stuff, and I don't want to talk about that, but as we have built out most of the schools that we promised the people we would build, we're more of a transition to maintenance now that I don't even know if wastewater's going to come up, but, but regardless of whether it would or wouldn't, it's a matter of just following the rules. Now, Trustee Smith asked some really good questions that I was going to ask. If something comes up, Ms. Sullivan, and it involves wastewater, and we say, wow, this is really technical, we want to put this out for a special bid, can we do that?
Yes, yes, we can.
So, they're not technic...
Yes, if we had a special project that we thought was large enough, so, for example, we have an architect's pool also, but if we were building a brand-new school, and we had a brand-new design that's never been designed before, we could go out to an RFQS, it would be the same type of process, but it would be for one discrete winner to win a particular project, and we would do, we would likely do that if we were going to design a brand-new school.
You know, or a particular location, or locker, incline, or somewhere that was remote and didn't have the same water systems and wastewater...
If there was something special or specific, or the value was extremely high, we could do a solicitation targeted at just that project, yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Again, if I graded the presentation, it's an A+, I was, I'm not in the engineering business at all, never was, but in my business, I lost a contract, and I knew, I told the people writing it up, I said, you're not doing it right, and they didn't, and we lost on that technicality, and we weren't allowed to resubmit, and it was a real technicality of how we worded the name of the company, versus an LLC, or blah, 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 and I'm like, we didn't do it right, and I had to accept that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Trustee Mayberry, and then back over to Trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief, a lot of the questions were already answered. I, I do have no doubt about your qualifications, Hildy, and I appreciate your being here, I appreciate your passion, I truly do, but just like a lot of my colleagues have said, I'm concerned about, you know, the, the process as well, and I have to play a lot of rules, right? The question I would have for Ms. Sullivan is, is these, in this particular case, is bids came in, do you, do you have, and this, in this case, you had 40-plus, do you look at them and scan them, and maybe there's one that, oh, the signatures are missing, there's some, you know, call them, and you want to come back in and, and, and update or rectify your error, or is that, would that be unfair?
Yes, there is, there is an allowance for that in the law, that basically what we call clerical errors can be rectified. So, for example, in a bid, if somebody has a unit price times a quantity, and their extended price is wrong, we can correct that because we have the unit price. There are some documents that are not required by law and are not pertinent to the submission of the, of the solicitation that we can waive as an irregularity. So, for example, we used to, we don't have anymore, but we used to have a 48-hour subcontractors' list in our, in our construction bid, so anyone, require them to disclose any subcontractor at any level that would be on our property. Well, the law only requires a 5% and a 1%, so we could waive that 48-hour if they didn't turn it in, we could waive that as an irregularity, and they could turn it in, you know, maybe it's a daylight instead of, instead of within 48 hours of the bid opening. So, there is an allowance in the law for us... 48 hours of the bid opening. So there isn't an allowance in the law for us to waive irregularities. And so that's why this particular issue, I have vetted with the Office of the General Counsel on so many occasions, because some people would like to call it an irregularity or a clerical error. And we think it's important because it binds them to the terms and conditions, and there's nothing binding them if they don't sign it. So we don't view the lack of signature as an irregularity or a clerical error.
No. Yeah, I'm struggling, too. I truly am. I mean, I-
Yeah, and Trustee Mayberry, what you were saying is that there's no opportunity in the RFQS process that they see as missing. That's it. They don't allow any, they don't do any pre-review or anything.
I understand.
It's a timeline.
Well, the process would probably be a discussion for another day, you know, but the process will be in place.
Sure, at that point. Yeah, that certainly, that being the case. Yeah, I think that, yes, if I, if I may, before Trustee Rodriguez, I think the, the issue that Ms. Sullivan is making is the signature is what's the binding thing legally. If something, I forgot how you said it, Trustee Church, if something goes wrong or whatever, right? Because if it gets off the rails, gets off the track somehow, that's when that might be an issue. So that might be a little bit more, it sounds like it's a little bit more of where you're advised from a legal standpoint in terms of that. So that may not be rectified.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Black, at what point did you realize that you missed the signatures or they weren't signed?
Yeah, like that same day when they were opening, opening the bids. They did it via Zoom.
All right. And at what time did you contact the school district to correct that?
Yeah, we spoke up, I think, while they were in the Zoom meeting. And, you know, we were just, we were surprised. And then we emailed it over as, as quick as we could get everything printed and signed. And, you know, went back through, made sure everything was signed, and we emailed it over.
And then, yeah, Ms. Sullivan, my brief time on the board, in fact, this is like the third appeal, I think, we've had. Second, you know, in my brief time here. So I want to go back to, like, when you said that we, as a district, have had numerous different contractors or bids that weren't signed. So that, that's alarming to me. Like, okay, this has happened more and more than once. What are we, as a district, doing to correct that? So, um-
No, I think that's fair. And I will tell you that we strive to improve our processes on a regular basis. I'll tell you from the last appeal, I think it was President Taylor asked us to go back and look at our process for financial stability review, and we have, and we have made some changes to that that were important and allowed more people in. So we're always looking at process improvements, always. But in this particular case, you know, this is, to me, is an issue about binding, binding their agreement, and they just didn't do it.
Yeah, I understand that. And I'll be honest, my, well, first half of my time on here has been a lot of distractions going on, but there's a lot of policies I know I want to look at and update and address. And, you know, I am thinking it was best for our students and our staff. And I'll be honest, think, you know, you're, we're just a school district where you do your homework, you don't put your name on top. I mean, you don't degrade. I mean, so I, I'm struggling, too. But I also know this is a lot of the red tape. But I know as, you know, as a citizen of our country, there's a lot of red tape in our government, and I do think this is one of them. So again, I, I want to put the best interest of our district and our students first. And I think shortening our, you know, going from four to three on choices, I don't know, that's necessarily, I, I get the rules. I get that. But, you know, obviously, it's not like there's 20 people that can, or, I'm sorry, 20 companies that can do what they do. So that's something I'm also going to take into consideration. So, but thank you.
For the record, I take no pleasure in this either.
No, I don't think it's-
I, I like competition. We respect Shaw Engineering, obviously. We, we think they do a good job. We'll be friends tomorrow, whatever the outcome is. But I take no pleasure in it either. And I don't think I fully answered your question about how many times it's happened. It has happened numerous times. We issue hundreds of bids, and in my tenure, probably more than 1,000. And so it does happen, but it doesn't happen on every bid on a regular basis. But it does happen, and we just strive to, to treat it consistently. It's the same way as if we don't accept a late bid. If it is 10 seconds, you may recall on Real Wrangler, we had a bid come in like 20 or 40 seconds late, and we did not accept it on a $40 million bid, because those are the rules. And they knew the rules, and we were, we weren't-
They were in the parking lot, as I recall.
They were in the parking lot in time, yep.
I will, please, Trustee Church?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, let's do that. The only other thing, I just, if I may ask one question, sir, then I'll come right back to you. And so you, Ms. Sullivan, I just want to follow up a little bit. There were signatures that were missed, but you said there were pages that the signatures, can you help us? Can you help me?
So there are, there are forms that we include in our RFQS, and they have to submit those forms signed. And there's, there's three that we require be submitted. Public disclosure form, any addenda that are acknowledged, issued and then acknowledged, and then the signature page. And so in one case where the, we had, we had a proposer submit the documents, the sign, the documents that were supposed to be signed, they just weren't signed. And we rejected their proposal. And in Shaw's case, they just did not submit those forms at all.
Okay.
So they made their proposal, but they just did not submit those required forms.
So those pages weren't included, and when, when it was gathered, when your staff members gathered them and so on, those pages were left out?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That, that helps me. Thank you so much. Trustee-
And if I, if I can just, you know, a couple of quick things. If we, if you guys let out a, sorry, excuse me. If the district lets out a large project for architect, for a new school or something, it's always going to go through an architect. There's never really a direct selection for engineering. It would be a very unique circumstance to where we would really have an opportunity for a larger project. In addition, majority of the projects that Shaw completes for the district are very small dollar amount. I mean, our typical, you know, contract for engineering is not at any level that would be, you know, worth the time for staff to go through a custom RFQ process for that project. So we are talking about mainly the rehab projects, the smaller items that, you know, you do want someone that specializes in those things. And again, binding the agreement that, you know, we signed and emailed that stuff over right away, there's no doubt. We also signed, you know, almost identical forms two years prior. So understanding that we were, you know, bound by, by those terms, I mean, there, there's no doubt in that. And then, you know, there's a couple options.
Mr. Black, I'm not, I'm not going to give you a chance to go back through it again, unless, unless there's some new information, sir.
I would say directing purchasing to allow the late submission of just forms would be one option. Direct purchasing to open qualifications-based lists quarterly or semi-annually or annually would be helpful with this process, or direct purchasing to allow qualifications-based lists to be in effect, you know, perpetually, would be another. So there's some options there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Trustee Church?
My, my understanding, I'm pretty good on open meeting law, that that's not on our agenda today. That's not what we go to.
Look, I just pulled the agenda out and looked down. It's like, that's not here.
Therefore, I've been spanked on this before.
That's not here.
I fully agree with that.
Therefore, I'm going to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees denies the appeal of Shaw Engineering, LTD, to the letter of intent to award request for qualifications, RFQS 34-QS-09-22-AA, Engineering Services for the Washoe County School District.
If there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the trustees? Trustee Smith and then Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, President Taylor. I did want to add that I will vote to support the motion, but I do want to impart that hopefully the discussion that we had and some of the thoughts that were shared could possibly be considered by district staff. And this is a very difficult decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just want to say again, I know there's a lot of policies out there that really need to be updated. And I would personally like to see a review, just, you know, as a trustee. And this, this is a hard one. You know, again, I go back to doing your homework, and it's unfortunate. But I'm also very torn, because I want to think it's best for our students at the end of the day. And this is part of the red tape that I don't like.
Yeah, and it's not one project. It's, you know, that's what's frustrating. It's not just losing one, it's years of services.
And I also, I don't like, I don't like that it gets up to this level. I feel like there should be some measurements, or someone in the district should have leeway to not take up an hour of the board's time. I don't want to say not take up. That's incorrect. But, uh-
There was a process. This is the final step in the process.
And I feel that, you know, I mean-
Something else to look at.
It is. Um, but, uh, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote yet, but, uh, I, I see both sides. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. It's, it's a difficult decision, I think, for all of us. There's no question about that. Further discussion? Yeah, please. Superintendent McNeil?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. And thank you very much, Mr. Black. I truly appreciate you spending your time here. And I, you know, have a great amount of respect for Andrea and her team and the amount of work that they put into this process. But I will say, as a CEO that signs thousands of documents within the scope of my responsibilities for the district, it comes back to my responsibility as far as layers within my organization to check and double-check that I am signing, what I am signing is appropriate. And that lays on me. And as a former person that is head of the Grants Department, we lost out on a multimillion-dollar grant because of a signature years ago. That was a hard lesson to learn. And from that time forward, we put steps in place so that that would never happen again. And so it would be my recommendation that you put steps in place within your organization to check and double-check, to make sure that you have all the appropriate pieces and parts in place. Because I absolutely understand where you're coming from as a CEO. So I just wanted to put that on the record, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. And I think there is information, hopefully, for both ends. We can continue to look to improve our processes internally. And then saying, "Mr. Black, we're just so sorry." I mean, you can, it's, it's a struggle for us.
I, I do want to say the purchasing department's been very professional throughout this process, and I really appreciate staff and district's time today. Thank you very much again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome. And thank you. Okay, let's move on. Agenda item 2.05. No, not yet. 2.05, approval of the recommendation of award for request for qualifications RFQS. Now we go to the continuation of, of this next step. Number 34QS0922AA, Engineering Services for the Washoe County School District, to Ainsworth and Associates Mechanical Engineers, Black Eagle Consulting Incorporated, Broadbent and Associates Incorporated, CSBR Structural Group LLC, Construction Materials Engineers, Inc., DEI Engineers, Ecomindi Engineers, Inc., Far West Engineering, Geotechnical and Environmental Services, Inc., Headway Transportation, Henderson Engineers, and Nova Technologies, JP Engineering, LLC, Kim Lee Henderson Engineers, oh, Kim Lee Horn, excuse me, Lloyd Sports and Engineering, Manhart Consulting, McKinstry Ascension, LLC, NCE Engineering and Environmental Services, Nelson Wilcox Structural Engineers, Nova Geotechnical and Inspection Services, DBA, Doing Business as Universal Engineering, Odyssey Engineering, Inc., Petty and Associates, Inc., PK Electrical, Inc., Pogmire Design Group, Browns Engineering, Doing Business as CR Engineering, SGF Engineering, Shields Engineering, Inc., Summit Engineering, Terp Consulting, TJK Consulting Engineers, Inc., Turpin and Raden Engineering, Inc., and Wood Rogers Incorporated for possible action. All right. That being said, Ms. Sullivan?
For the record, Andrea Sullivan, Director of Procurement and Contracts. I'll make this quick. This would not only be on the consent agenda, but because you had to make a decision on the appeal first, this item is coming after that. This was an RFQS for Engineering Services to create a pool for the district. It was publicly open on November 10th. We received 46 proposals. Forty-three were evaluated. We had two rejected for lack of signature and one that did not pass financial review. Each committee member individually read all of the proposals, and then they met as a committee on March 3rd. They evaluated 43 proposals and recommended award to the 32 that you just listed. We issued the letter of intent on March 31st, which opened the public five-day appeal window. We did receive an appeal that the board has just denied. And so therefore, we are asking that the Board of Trustees award this RFQS to the 32 firms listed in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Don't know if there are any questions I neglected to ask, but I know you would have been waving a card if there were public comment. Let me do that first. Is there public comment on this one, JJ? Thank you, and thank you for the card. That's kind of our cover. Don't miss me. But I appreciate that. Any, any questions for Ms. Sullivan on this? We've, we've really talked through the process and so on before. So if not, I'm looking for a motion, if that's the pleasure of the board. Trustee Mayberry?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Thank you for not reading the whole, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yes, love it. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Oh, is this something there should be a disclosure about? Yes. Yes, you know, why don't we pause for a minute and do that? We should, we should do that. Why don't we, for those who may have disclosures on any things that are, that's construction-related, this would be those of us who may, this would be a time to put that out there for, for consideration. So I'll go, I'll start with you, Trustee Smith.
I was trying to just get clarification on that.
Want to go, want to go?
Let's do it this way. I'm sorry, Mary.
Please.
Sorry.
Please.
This is not a grant of a specific award to anyone. This is just more of a, we accept this list. But if you, if you want, what I would suggest is that you, let me look at the numbers here. You make your disclosures related to 2.01, 2.02, I guess, 2.03, and 2.05. I want to be clear that I'm making this recommendation out of an overabundance of caution. I've read multiple cases over the week from the Nevada Commission on Ethics, and I don't think these disclosures are necessary. But out of an extreme abundance of caution, I'm making the recommendation that you make them. I really don't think they're needed for 205 or 203. But nonetheless, if, if we're going to do it, let's just do it and include all of them.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you for bringing that up, Trustee Smith. As I was reading some names, I was like, hmm. But I knew we weren't awarding contracts to them. But why don't we just, again, out of the extreme abundance of caution, just take care of this now instead of later in the meeting, and then that way it's all taken care of. And for those of us making them, remember the numbers are 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, and 2.05 as a disclosure. 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, and 2.05. Okay, we'll go right here. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, President Taylor and Chief General Counsel, Rombardo. I also share Mr. Rombardo's evaluation that this is entirely unnecessary, but out of an abundance of caution on the advice of counsel as it relates to items 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, 2.05, and 2.06, I am disclosing that I received campaign contributions from Laborers International, which was reported on my Q1 CNE and is publicly available, Building and Construction Trades, the Associated General Contractors of Nevada, also known as the AGC, and Q&amp;D. And although I greatly appreciate these contributions, they are not of such a nature that would sway a public officer to abstain on this item pursuant to NRS 281A dot 4203 and 4. Further, the campaign contributions that were from general trade organizations provide all trades the same business opportunity to receive the bid. As a trustee, I do not participate in who may receive the actual contract to complete this project. And thus, there can be no quid pro quo, nor is there quid pro quo. As a result, and based on the advice of counsel, as well as Nevada Commission on Ethics opinions, I will be voting on this item and all the items as I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. I'm going to suggest, if you would mind, that we add 2.06, just as the advice of counsel suggests, to be, again, the extreme abundance of caution.
Thank you. I think I included that one.
Did you say 06? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, you did, but for the other trustees, I missed that.
Thank you. Yes, yes, I had flagged that one for myself. Yes, thank you.
All right, great. Trustee Rodriguez?
I'm going to read this right here. Pretty much in the same boat. On the vice of counsel, I am disclosing I received campaign contributions from Q&amp;D Construction, Building Trades Construction, PAC 401, American General Counsel, American General Contractors, and the General Laborers Union. You know, should I include the fire departments? And although I greatly appreciate these contributions, they are not in such a nature that would sway a public officer from abstaining on this item pursuant to NRS 281A point 420 subsections 3 and 4. The further, further con, campaign contributions where general trade organizations provide all the, provide all the trades and the same business opportunities to receive a bid. As a trustee, I do not participate in who may receive the actual contract and complete this project. And thus, that- this project, and thus, there can be no quid pro quo. As a result, and based on the vice of counsel, as well as the Nevada Commission on Ethics opinions, I'm not materially affected by these contributions and pursuant to NRS 281A point 420 subsections 1 and 3. I'm disclosing these potential conflicts and voting on this project, and as the law requires elected officials to do so. And these will also be on my CNE reports with the Secretary of State when timely manner.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Mayberry?
Actually, ma'am.
I'm sorry, trustee Rodriguez may want to continue.
And I'll be voting on agenda items 2.01, 02, 03, 05, and 06. I will be voting on those.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Apologies, trustee Mayberry. Please, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Sounds like a broken record. I apologize. But I appreciate the opportunity. But on advice of counsel, I'm also disclosing I received campaign contributions from Laborers International, which has been reported on my first quarter CNE. Additionally, Teamsters Local 533, Operating Engineers Local 3, and Building and Construction Trades. Also received contributions from the Associated General Contractors of Nevada, Western Nevada Supplying, Savage &amp; Sun. And although I greatly appreciate these contributions, they are not such of a nature that would sway a public officer to abstain on this item pursuant to NRS 281A dot 420, section 3 and 4. Further, the campaign contributions that were from general trade organizations provide all trades the same business opportunity to receive a bid. And as a trustee, I do not participate in who may receive the actual contract to complete this project, and thus, there can be no quid pro quo, nor is there a quid pro quo. And as a result, and based on the advice of counsel, as well as the Nevada Commission on Ethics, I will be voting on this item, and will be voting on, taking action, voting on 2.1, 2, 3, 5, and 6. Additionally, on advice of counsel, trustee Church has made some allegations that I had a conflict with my employer. So I'm disclosing out of an abundance of caution that two county commissioners supported the passage of one of these projects. We'll just say, I believe it's 2.01.
2.01. 02 and 03, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And 3. So to be clear, to disclose, I do not work for county commissioners. I work for the fire chief with my employment with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. I do not have a reporting, direct reporting structure to county commissioners or the fire commissioners, nor do I work for Washoe County. I work for the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, which is a separate political subdivision of the state of Nevada. And further, my position as communications manager for my employer has nothing to do with the position that I hold today. I'm sitting as an appointed public officer for the Washoe County School District, and the commissioners' votes mean nothing more to me than other members of the Capital Funding Protection Committee who approved the project. Furthermore, I have not received any campaign donations from any county commissioners. So as a result, I'm not materially affected by their vote and pursuant to NRS 281A dot 420613. I'm disclosing these potential conflicts and voting on this project as the law requires elected officials to do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mayberry. And the fourth and final disclosure, and then we'll get back to our motion. On the advice of counsel, I am disclosing that I receive campaign contributions from Cor West Clark Sullivan, Q&amp;D Construction and Laborers Union, number 169. And although I greatly appreciate the contributions, and I do, they're not of such a material nature that would sway any public officer to abstain on this pursuant to NRS 281A dash 423, 420 subsections 3 and 4. And if a general trade organization, actually, I don't have that, that's all I need it. Further, the campaign contributions, and those, by the way, were reported in the timely manner, I think, at least one of those already reported as required by law, and then the others will be reported on this next report as required by law. And further, as a trustee, I do not participate in who may receive the actual contract to complete this project, and thus, there can be no quid pro quo, nor is there any quid pro quo. And as a result, and based upon the advice of counsel, as well as in the Nevada Commission on Ethics opinion, I am not materially affected by these contributions. And pursuant to NRS 281A dot 420 subsections 1 and 3, I am disclosing these potential, and I want to emphasize, potential conflicts, as my review as well has indicated that it's really going above and beyond, and voting on this project and those that are before us today and futurely, as the law requires elected officials to do. So all these disclosures are made, and now we can get back to the motion. And I think trustee Mayberry, you were going to make, who was in the process? Someone was in the process of making the motion? And then we?
You actually had a motion that was made by trustee Mayberry.
That's right, yes.
And I believe it was seconded by trustee.
Okay, and that one, I, yes, that was it. Seconded by trustee Minneto. So just, it was the approval of agenda item. I won't read it because it's lengthy, as we all know. Approval of agenda item 2.05, and the motion was so moved, and then there was a second by trustee Mayberry, and again, a second from trustee Minneto. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion is carried. Okay, we're going to go on to agenda item 2.06. 2.06. This is approval of the agreement to provide professional consulting services with McKinstry Ascension LLC for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing assessment district-wide for $584,000. Mr. Circe, Chief Facilities Management Officer is before us. Thank you, sir.
Hi, good morning. Adam Circe, Chief Facilities. This is another one tied to the previous two items, in a sense. This would typically be a routine business item under consent. This is not insignificant dollar amount, but it is a district-wide study. This particular consulting firm we've done business with in the past via a project-specific RFP, but previously, they were not included on the RFQS pool of available consultants. With the most recent past action, they are now available for our consideration through that list. And so we're proposing this agreement, as the agenda item and staff report describe, is a district-wide assessment of our HVAC or mechanical, electrical, and plumbing facilities, uniquely complex, uniquely expensive, and uniquely valuable to our classrooms and our district facilities. So this is an investment that we feel is important to make to help us optimize our capital investments across all of our facilities in the district. That's the presentation, but I'd be happy to discuss if you have any questions. Thank you.
Before we get into that, do we have any public comment on this, JJ? Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Circe on agenda item 2.06? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion if that's the pleasure of the board?
Certainly.
Okay, we'll take the motion from trustee Smith and seconded from trustee Rodriguez. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. As the record shows, it too is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Circe. Okay, now let's jump back to agenda item 2.01. We've taken care of those. I know, we're going to boot camp it through, you guys, so if you need to take a break, go ahead. We're going to, Katie Simon-Holland boot camped it. Okay. All right, discussion on the budget and schedule for the Debbie Smith Career Technical Education Academy High School, and possible action to move a phased-delivery approach to respond to construction market pricing as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. Mr. Circe and Ms. Zimmerman are before us.
Good morning. Thank you to President Taylor. My name is Tammy Zimmerman. I am the Deputy Chief Facilities Management Officer for the district. And we're here before you with an action item for the Debbie Smith CTE Academy High School. This comes forward with a recommendation from the Capital Funding Protection Committee to you guys. I'm going to give you a little bit of history of where we've come from and how we've gotten to today with that, and then Mr. Circe is going to follow up with the options that we have presented and our recommendation for that. All right, so we started in June of 2020 with a selection-based process. It's an RFQS for Q&amp;D construction. And that goes through a proposal section for it. They submit a proposal. We, as a committee, review it. We have an outside person on the committee, the architect, some of us from capital projects, and as well as some academic professionals on that committee to review them. They come in after that proposal, we shortlist, and then they begin a process of a presentation to us. And we score that, and then we put out an award to a contractor, a construction manager at risk contractor, to work through the process with us as the owner, architect, and the C Mar as a team. So after we did that, we started through the design process. The design process came out with several different pieces on the property at the existing HUD campus. So some of it, we have eight existing buildings. We will, proposing to demo five buildings. Then we're proposing to renovate three of them. And then where we have demoed, we're proposing to install a new building for some of those academies that need that space. And then the remainder of it will be a courtyard as well as parking. So it's not just a renovation. It's got a little bit of everything in there, so scope is pretty large with that. August of 2021, we came and we presented that process to you guys as we moved through schematic design. December of 2021, we brought a construction budget range as we finished our design development. In February of 2022, we came to the capital funding and the board again for final construction budget for that project. We'd finished our construction documents, and we're getting ready for permitting. That construction budget is 112 million, but the overall budget that was approved that day was 125 million, which includes FFNE and professional services. Along with that, back in 2019, we actually came to the board and capital funding, and we're approved for approximately 13 million for design phases for that project. So total, we have 138 million. But for construction, we're set for 112 million is the idea. That detailed budget came to you guys. It had escalation, it had design contingency, it had owner's contingency, and it had contractor's contingency in that estimate. And that was verified by O'Connor Construction Management, which is a high-level company that comes out of Las Vegas and helped us to make sure that we were on the right track with the budget. Q&amp;D administered the bid process. They put it out to bid in March of 2022 and opened in mid-April. And we, as the district and the owner, were an observant of that opening and watched them open the bids and read the numbers out. The draft GMP we received in early May, it was from the contractor, 142.8 million. That did not include owner's contingency on that. We, as a district, decide and then put an owner's contingency on that. So with that, it would have been 147 million total in comparison to what was approved for 112 million for construction. So $35 million difference. This team has been left with some decisions to stay within state law, our budget, and taxpayer dollars, and be conscious of that. Schedule, Washoe County School District requirements have not changed for the actual contract that was in those documents and provided to Q&amp;D. So it has the typical language we've had with all of ours going forward. The extreme conditions, there's market uncertainty, which we believe has been shown in the prices and the bids that we received from subcontractors. The proposed GMP included 7.5 million of C Mar construction contingency, above and beyond what we understand is on those subcontractor bids as well. So schedule, timing of 2022 opening and the work conflicted with many of our subcontractors. That resulted in the demo, which is a big, large portion and was in the critical path of being over the estimate by $10 million. So it was estimated at approximately 13. It was over, or it was estimated at 3 million, and it was 13 million, 13 to 15 million when we were done. So the timing, trying to find subcontractors to bid it at that time, starting in the summer, which is when a lot of them were busy, was very difficult.
Ms. Zimmerman, I'm going to interrupt you just a moment. Trustee Church?
Yeah, just a clarification on that. Can you, you lost me. So go back over that one particular bid.
Which part is that?
The 10 million, the 3 million versus 13 million.
So in our estimate, when we did it with O'Connor Construction and the C Mar and that, it was estimated at being $3 million for demo, right? And then when we opened the bids, it was $13 million. So it's $10 million over what we had estimated for that. And we believe that was due to the timing and the lack of participation from more bidders.
Can I clarify that, trustee Church? Okay. Dr. Nicolet, I'm sorry.
Thank you, just a quick, thank you for asking that. So the C Mar, when you, do you come together with the C Mar, O'Connor to design the cost or the demolition? You work together on that cost?
So the O'Connor Construction and Q&amp;D, as well as the owner, worked together in the budget estimate, right? O'Connor certified that our budget estimate was in line with the market and what they have been seeing, so that gives us an assurance when we ask for money that our bids will come in under that and we'll be able to beat that. That was kind of the insurance we got.
That make, that clear, Dr. Nicolet? Okay, please, go ahead.
So then, extreme supply chain issues. We've seen it with many types of building systems, glazing and that. It's just taking longer uncertainty. They're adding fuel prices to them that they don't get until it actually ships out of their manufacturer. So those uncertainties added to their prices, the bid prices. Major scopes, we may have only received two bids on major scopes, and specifically one, which is a big, large one, HVAC, we received one bid. And those are big dollar amounts. Some were even unable to bid due to putting that escalation into their bid because it would put them over their bid limit for contractors. So some of them would provide a bid, and it was under their bid limit, but then when you started to see what they actually had excluded out of that, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have been under the bid limit to bid.
So Tammy just walked us through how we got to where we are, how we got to the bid period, and a little bit of the evaluation that went into immediately after opening the bids. What just happened? We have a draft GMP that's 30% greater than what was anticipated. How did this happen? All best practices and efforts were put into place to avoid this, and because of a variety of market factors, something very unexpected has occurred. So after dissecting the results, we immediately transitioned to a solution-oriented posture with our team. I think the first point that we want to make and express to the public is that the district remains 100% committed to the mission and vision of this project. We believe that bid results of this nature are not something that are easy to absorb, that will likely impact the immediate trajectory of the project, but the overall mission, vision, and need and purpose of this project remain intact, and we remain committed to that. But how we go about delivering that in light of recent events was a question at the time. So responding to the bid results required swift and collaborative effort. We do have a very strong team. We have, including our architect, Van Ward Begotti, and our partner, C Mar Partner, Q&amp;D Construction, as well as the entirety of our capital project staff brainstorming, looking at a wide variety of potential options to try to respond to this turn of events. So the next couple of slides summarize the options, and we tried to distill those options down into only three. There were many outside-of-the-box ideas put forward, many combinations of scenarios considered. We'll just try and summarize three here today. So option one, award as proposed. So obviously, that would maintain our proposed, our planned opening date of this facility for August 2024. I put a little plus sign next to the pros and cons kind of here for these different options. However, at the current proposed contract price, it is financially infeasible for the school district at this time. Now, that's a complicated conclusion or explanation, but the conclusion is that it is financially unfeasible for the school district. There are not sufficient budgeted appropriations. We have not planned for this. Despite all of our efforts, we planned for a very different number and are unable at this time, nor are there unused funds from other projects that we could sweep or reallocate. We actually did that to a considerable degree to fund the $112 million level budget, but at $147 million, there are simply no options at our disposal in the time period in which we in the time period in which we must act in order to award this project as proposed. And then lastly, there are not additional bonding authority available to merely issue additional bonds. You've spoken many times at length with CFO Mathers, who's here today, about the process associated with issuing additional debt, and that is not a swift process. And we unfortunately, as coincidence would have it, do not have just outstanding authority available to issue additional debt in this time period. And then lastly, this option does not effectively leverage opportunities for improvement. As Ms. Zimmerman described, as with any endeavor, there are always lessons learned. To some degree, we could always improve. We did learn a bit about our approach despite our best efforts on how we might do better next time. And the proceeding immediately with option one would forego those potential opportunities for improvement. So again, very high-level summary, but moving on to option two. We proposed this, or you know, titled it as a phased delivery. And when we described this to the Capital Funding Protection Committee, we made clear that we feel this solution or this option allows for construction in some form or fashion to begin before the end of this calendar year. We saw that as a pro or a benefit to this approach in that it doesn't result in a vacant campus for an extended period of time. We wanted to avoid that, not only for public perception reasons, but also from a maintenance and liability standpoint. We don't want to have weeds growing and vandalism occurring on a vacant campus. So pursuing some phased portion of this project before the end of 2022 is something we feel is achievable. It does allow for some opportunities for improvement to be incorporated into a renewed effort to deliver this. It allows time for our business office to make financial adjustments in whatever means necessary to meet the challenge, meet the requirements of this project from a financial standpoint. However, as opposed to option one, where we have bids in hand and we were potentially able to execute them immediately, option two requires rebidding of all these scopes of work. So as you can imagine, the tremendous amount of effort on the part of many, many subcontractors across this community went into preparing and submitting these bids. Rebidding is not only an extremely frustrating and time-consuming endeavor, but there's often, well, an opportunity for bidders to revisit their numbers as well. So that's never a preferred option, but it would be a requirement of this scenario. Of course, market conditions may worsen, they may improve as well, but we place that as a potential con in this scenario. And then as opposed to our opening point, allowing us to begin construction this calendar year, a phased delivery comes with certain inefficiencies that are inherent to a multi-package delivery. And so time is one of them in order to reevaluate the design, rebid the project, reevaluate our financing. This would push the opening or the completion of this school to at least August 2025. So that's kind of a summary of option two. And option three, on the complete opposite end of the spectrum, we titled as pause indefinitely. So we obviously have a set of contract documents that are complete and ready to go out to bid. They've been bid here recently. It could, this option could allow us to take a bit of a longer view at a redesign, looking a little bit more intensively at value engineering or scope modifications. It also could allow us time to adjust to the market a little more completely. So this essentially would involve us putting the project on the shelf, so to speak, reevaluating the design, but delaying the rebidding for a time in the future where it is more financially advantageous to the taxpayer. Obviously, this would delay the construction start and the completion even further. So indefinitely is very much the key word in option three. And there is no guarantee, of course, about what the future may hold with respect to the construction market. This, of course, would also require a rebidding, and definitely speaks to a number of intangible variables, such as what I mentioned before, is public perception and the overall commitment and need of this project to the community and taxpayers. But this is an option, this is a representative summary of the variety of options that we strive to swiftly entertain and come back with some form of a proposal about how we move forward. So as Tammy opened with, this was an action item to our Capital Funding Protection Committee some two weeks ago. We felt this was of significant enough importance that we wanted to be completely transparent with what has transpired and offer an op, a suite of options to the committee and the board to help guide the team on how to move forward in spite of this very frustrating turn of events. So the committee actually did a tremendous job. I know several of you were in attendance at the beginning of the meeting, but the deliberation on this item alone went on for over 90 minutes. They have, as you know, members, elected officials from all three jurisdictions. They also have subject matter experts who are appointed experts within their subject fields. So very robust discussion, very intelligent, thoughtful questions ensued. As I mentioned, CFO Mathers was also in attendance that evening. And as frustrating as this is for everyone involved, we also had representatives from Q and D Construction and prominent subcontractors from the community who were invited to come up and actually answer questions and provide a public comment. I described that so that the board might have a sense of the level of thoroughness with which this was debated, and also to convey their reluctance with which they cast the votes in favor of option two. So I will conclude with that, with that description, that there was a unanimous recommendation from the Capital Funding Protection Committee to proceed with option two. There was quite a bit of debate about the escalation within the construction and commodities markets. There was an amended motion that proceed with option two with an inclusion of contract language relative to escalation relief in our contract language. So that's something that we agreed to and was reflected in the motion from the committee. Again, however, this is the, what the staff report reads recommending proceeding with option two, striving for a calendar year 2022 beginning of construction, but noting some of the drawbacks associated with option two as well. And I think that's it for this item, it is a standalone action item here this afternoon. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Zimmerman and Mr. Sweeney. Let's see if we have any public comment to start, and then we'll bring it back here to the board.
Tim Sweeney.
Mr. Sweeney, welcome.
Thank you.
If we can have the two of you stay, there may be questions? Okay, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Sweeney, please, go ahead, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, Superintendent McNeil, President Taylor, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Trustees. I'm Tim Sweeney, I'm a longtime Reno architect. But I'm no stranger to the school district or school design. I've done schools in almost every district in the state, and that's since 1981. And I've been the architect for several Washoe County School District projects, including the first several phases of the Academy of Arts Careers and Technology. I've served over 10 years on the School District CTE Advisory Committee and several years on the Council for Career and Technical Education. I'm here today to let you know of a new building system that is now available. It can save you lots of time and money, depending upon the design and depending upon markets. And I am basically looking to work with staff to make sure that my system can meet your standards and be available for both retrofit and new construction. The system is a combination of panelization and passive house design. And let me talk first about panelization. That basically is a, taking floors, walls, roofs, making them into panels that can be constructed off-site, trucked onsite, and erected into place. That system has been proven by R S Means, the nation's largest estimating service, as up to 55% faster and 41% less expensive to put up than even cheapo woodstick framing. And of course, it all depends upon time, money, quality, and quantity. But there's been great examples of how panelization has worked. I've been involved in two schools in different districts, 40 square feet, 40,000 square feet, two stories, 40 classrooms, and they went from groundbreaking to occupancy in under 120 calendar days. One of those was actually hit by Hurricane Irma, and it was the only building in the area reportedly to have no structural damage. Now, passive house design, not to be confused with passive solar, is a way of making environments, building environments that are more beneficial. You can save up to 90% of the energy costs and the fuel costs, and I look forward to working with the district to evaluate my system.
Thank you, Mrs. Sweeney, we appreciate you being here, thank you for the information.
Colleen Westlake.
Welcome, Ms. Westlake.
Good morning, thank you. I'd like my statement on the record, and in the interest of transparency, I am a school board candidate. So I am speaking passionately and thinking of how I would proceed if I had the opportunity to make these types of decisions. I really don't want to cast, you know, throw darts here, but if the timeline's correct on the dates that this was all undertaken, I have to say, I think it was very irresponsible on this board's part to undertake this type of a renovative project during the beginning, the height of COVID, where kids were being locked out of classrooms, having to do Zoom learning. And you proceeded with something where you probably should have had the foresight to see that there would be these kind of ramifications coming out of a pandemic. And trust me, I don't believe there was a pandemic, but everyone else seems to think so. I'm encouraged by what Mr. Sweeney said, I think there's a time right now. It looks like y'all have a champagne taste, but we have a beer pocketbook. I think it's time to pump the brakes, not put this on taxpayers. And for all of your disclosures, I'm just saying, as a taxpayer and a layperson, it's not going to hold water with the citizens. We all know unions are political machines. This project has, does not have the dollars to support it. And by four of you, Ms. Nicolette's not up for election. Ellen, I don't know how you missed out on this one, when four of your other sitting board members found the gravy train, okay? Sorry if that's distasteful, Ms. Nicolette, but that's what citizens actually see.
Ms. Westlake, if we cannot be personal?
Okay, well, she rolled her eyes at me, so.
I'd appreciate that, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. It does appear that you're coloring out of the lines a little bit if this project were to proceed, which is going to put money into the very donors that you're trying to step back from now. Appreciating the donation, that's great. But then to proceed with something where the funds are not there, putting it on the backs of the taxpayers, it's time to stop, rethink this, reevaluate. And the rebidding's probably not a good idea. I've been involved in construction my entire life. There's such a thing as time and materials, you're going to start seeing these subcontractors come in, time and materials, and then it's really going to get costly.
Thank you, Ms. Westlake, appreciate you being here.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you, JJ. Okay, we'll move it back here to the board. Trustee Church, your lights on first, sir?
Thank you, I guess I'll go first, there are so many questions, so many issues. I'll try to be brief, but this is a lot of money. So for staff, the first thing, when I attended the Capital Projects and the Oversight Committee meetings, I swear I heard the word, the term 80 million at some kind of a starting point. Am I missing, mistaken on that, or? In terms of the costs, for me as a layperson, I thought I heard 80 million. Then we've got the 98 million that's listed and 112. Then we have the, and we end up at 147, there's even another figure in there. And so I'm really lost, 98 to 102, 80, 112, and then 142.8, and then 147. I'm lost, can you kind of help me on that?
I think the best way would, just to go back to the first slide in the presentation, we tried to go through that in a little bit of detail. We presented estimated budget ranges for the construction costs of this project on multiple occasions. Those budgets were created in partnership with the architect and the general contractor in that C Mar environment. Those budgets included contingencies and escalation percentages on top of the known or estimated to be known costs at those times. These were, as you see in late 2021, even into early 2022. So those are really the most recent public estimates as the design proceeded for the cost of this project. As Ms. Zimmerman described previously, we have received approval of design phase costs. And then in February 2022, we presented and received approval for the construction phase budget, which was estimated at 112 million plus an additional 13 million approximately for the FFNE, the furniture, fixtures, and equipment. That will ultimately be a cost of the construction phase, as well as the permitting and special inspection and construction professional services. So those are construction phase costs that this project would have to endure. That total was just over 136 or 37 million. That's what you see on the approval ledger for the funding committee. But when we're talking here today about the construction contract proposal at 147, that is an apples-to-apples comparison with what the entire team had forecasted to be a maximum of 112. So that's when we come back and say, we put it out to bid, we put the bids together, and the contractor presented us with the proposed contract of 147, that's in comparison to that 112 number.
Thank you. What about the 80 million, am I mistaken? I swear, I thought I heard beginning that there was an estimate of 80 million.
So back in, when the contractor was selected in 2020, some two and a half years ago, the RFQ through which they were select, or pardon me, RFP, the project-specific solicitation for this project, before any design was done several years ago, the project was noted to have been estimated at, I believe, 85 million at that time. As design matures, as different elements become known, that estimate grew up into 90 and 100 million. We then started to see market shifts as 2021 progressed. No one in the entire country accurately predicted exactly what would happen in the first quarter of 2022.
I don't want to cut you off, but I got a lot of questions, and I know we got a lot of stuff, so I've got it, I've got it.
Okay.
Let me stop you there, because I've got it. And the main thing is, sadly, it would have been nice if the 85 million were reflected on here, so we kind of know what we started at. Now, one big, big question, I'm totally confused on, I'm looking over my notes. I had to leave that meeting early, I had another board meeting to go to. The vote, what was the vote on that, and what was that amendment? And this is very important, is that amendment reflected in what we're voting on today, or do we have a, do we have a problem? Do you follow me? What was the vote?
The vote was six to zero in support of pursuing option two.
Okay, now I'm really even more confused, but you said there was an amendment?
I'd have to look at the exact verbiage.
I don't think he said that today, was there, did he say that? Was there, did he say that to you?
There was discussion, I mean, there was discussion of asking staff to make a modification to our contract language in future bidding opportunities.
Okay, so there was no, okay, I'm confused then. There was no amendment. They just passed what was on their motion. They didn't make an amendment to the motion? If they did, I'm concerned.
Let me jump in if I may. I'm not sure if, what we have before, my understanding, and this might clarify a little bit, my understanding is what we are considering today is what was actually passed. So if there was an amendment, the amendment would be reflected in what we're considering today.
Exactly.
Right, so what, so if, again, if there was an amendment, it would be concluded in what we're, what we are considering is what passed unanimously before the capital funding protection committee.
Exactly, and that's what, I can't find that amendment if it was there. I thought I heard you, again, I had to leave the meeting early. If they amended it, that's.
No, they, what's before us is not what, is what was passed. So if it was amendment, that, if it was amended, that amendment is reflected in what we see.
And where would I find that on the record if there was one?
You'd have to go back to those minutes and see that, sir. Because what we see, we don't see every single, we see, we see the actions that were taken. So this is the action that, this was the final motion that was passed.
Well, I'd like to provide a little bit of clarification. Because of the sequence of events between the committee meeting and the previously scheduled board meeting, and now the rescheduled board meeting on this item, the actual motion that was approved unanimously by the capital funding protection committee was an option to pursue, or option to pursue, option two, with an amended motion to direct staff to include contract escalation language in future bid documents. So I could be.
Right, but not related to this. I guess with trustee, no, I'm sorry, but not related to, that has something to do with future things, not with this project. Am I correct? It was not related to this project?
It was related to this project specifically. With option two, we would have to rebid the scope, and they were requesting that we include language allowing for escalation relief, potentially for certain aspects of the scope. This document was prepared before that committee convened, and so in accurately describing the amended motion that was unanimously approved by the committee, it did include that additional language.
This is terrible. I mean, I'm, this is for legal, I guess. I don't find it in my packet. I've looked, and I'm missing it. We don't know exactly what they voted on. It's not in the public domain packet. It's not in our packet. The first I heard about it was a few minutes ago. Whether it was minor or major, I'm just a messenger. Legal, can we proceed?
I just clarified, the entire video of the meeting was posted online within 48 hours after the completion of the meeting.
Okay. I guess, may it be, yeah, but it is available. It is available. Let me just, would you just clarify, what's the question, trustee church, so we can make sure and try to get you an answer?
The motion is, the final sentence, as recommended by the capital funding protection committee. If that recommendation is not in our board documents, I don't believe we, I don't care that it's on a video. I never looked at the video. I didn't know to look at the video. I'd spent some time this weekend going over this, and if I'm missing it, if it's in here, great. If it's not in here, I think we have a big problem. I think we have a legal problem.
I'm not sure of the question. I hear you, so you're asking, help me, help me.
Well, I guess Mr. Lombardo, he understands it, but if we're going to vote on what was recommended by the capital funding protection committee, that motion should be in our board documents and the public documents, and it's, apparently it's not.
I'm going to ask this, with this motion as before us, was this recommended by the capital funding protection committee?
It was with the amendment, as I described, related to future contract language relieving some degree of escalation.
So it sounds as though this was recommended by the capital funding protection committee in addition to something else?
Yes.
But always one motion, if I might?
Correct. The motion was made to pursue option two as proposed, and then an amendment was proposed, which was agreed to by the committee and ultimately unanimously approved.
Okay, so this was, this was recommended by the capital funding protection committee?
That's correct.
And therefore, it doesn't seem as though we're out of line. If we were, then legal would have jumped in.
Well, I'm asking legal, it was, the motion that was made is not, I don't know what it was. I mean, he can tell me what he thinks he heard, but I don't see the motion anywhere here to know what I'm voting on, and I'm just a messenger. I'm not trying to put a cog in the works, but we got to follow the law. I don't, this is a total shock to me. I mean, I have a lot of questions, but this is a total shock.
Why don't we do this, trustee church? Continue on with some questions, and we'll see what we can find out, okay?
All right, does that, okay. So you said it was a six.
What, and I do want to say, just as we look at this, so you said you want to follow the law. What law would we not be, are you concerned that we're not following, so we can really hone down? I want to get an answer to your question, sir, if you can help me with that.
Sir, we have legal here who's the expert, and I certainly respect Mr. Lombardo's expertise because it's longstanding. I'm not a lawyer, but I think that documents have to reflect, under open meeting law, you know, what we're voting on. I think that the documents have to be presented to us and to the public in a timely manner to know, again, it says, as recommended by the capital funding protection committee, and I don't know exactly what they recommended until I see it in writing, not hearsay, but in writing. So that's where I'm at. I mean, I'm sick to my stomach over this. This just came up.
Trusty Church, why don't you go ahead with some other questions, see what we can find out, okay? Dr. Nicolet, and then, I thought I had another.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do have a question. I wrote myself a note here, escalation relief, and since we're talking about that, I would like to understand what that means. Option two, and it contains, so thank you.
So generally speaking, our contracts require that the prices submitted at the time of bid be honored throughout the duration of the construction project. So there's a lot of concern voiced from the construction industry about their risk or ability to honor those prices, and there were contingencies included in the original, or the proposed, construction contract, but our contract language, which is the same contract language that we've used on all of our projects successfully for many, many years, requires or offers little to no opportunity for contractors to revise their pricing after the contract's been awarded. And so to try to mitigate that, there was discussion of crafting specific contract language in certain instances for the district to evaluate and potentially approve additional costs stemming from market inflation or escalation after the contract's been awarded.
Thank you.
That's not something that we currently do. That's not something that we've recently done, but it's something that we will be looking to include in the future.
That's based upon where we are from a market standpoint. Yeah, that was my understanding as well. Jump in right here, and then we'll go, since we're on the same topic, we'll jump in, then we'll go back to you, trustee church.
Yeah. A point of clarification, that not everything that all of our committees votes on actually has to go back to the board as a separate item. I mean, the committees provide direction to district staff on a bunch of different topics, and then there's only a limited number of decisions that come from a committee that then go to the board of trustees for a decision. So the part that, from what I understand, that is in front of us, is the part of their decision that is appropriate to elevate to the board of trustees. I mean, our committees make lots and lots of motions that direct staff on things, but do not necessarily elevate to the point of what the board would ultimately need to choose. So if there was a secondary choice about how the committee envisioned district staff to engage in the next levels, that does not necessarily fall under the purview of the board of trustees. Obviously, we are responsible for everything, but committees make lots and lots of motions and direct staff on lots and lots of things, but not everything elevates up to the point of a board action. It may come to us later, based on what we vote on today, but the part that we're voting on is what is germane to this agenda item. And so I just offer that based on my experience previously.
I appreciate that, trustee Smith. That was my thinking is, what's germane is that this is the recommendation, which is the essential part of what it is that we're looking toward, and there are some details to it that certainly are important going forward, but not important in terms of our decision-making as to, do we delay it? Do we continue it? Or do we delay it in a slower method? Those are really, otherwise, it's back to, that was my, that was my thinking, it's like, this is the recommend, if this was not the recommendation, that might be something different. And that's not what I'm hearing, nor what was presented to us before, nor this one. So you have other questions? Go ahead, trustee church.
Specifically on this, so when I look at my board docs, previous board action, June 2nd, 2022, capital funding protection committee approved proceeding with option two. So when I click on that, there's nothing there. It's the same PowerPoint that we have, it doesn't have any new motions, it doesn't have the motion, and they really didn't just approve that, they approved it with a amendment. So I'm ready to move on with other questions.
I appreciate that. Thank you, trustee church. We're trying to get you some answers. Keep moving if we would. Thank you.
So you said it was approved six to one. When I look at the.
He said six, zero.
Six, zero, six, zero. When I look at the capital projects committee, and I was there, I think there was one or two absent, but there's 11 members. So how do we get six to zero? I believe there was much more than six.
Well, I was at that meeting as well. I don't remember counting.
There's 11 members, seven were present at the beginning of the meeting, one left before the vote occurred.
And six is a quorum, because there's 11.
Okay. Okay, if you say so, okay. I want to express concern.
Point, not if you say so. Humans being automating and voting is a factually important detail. So this wasn't anyone's opinion. Is it clear and for the record that there were six voting members, and six voting members voted unanimously for this? There's no opinion on this?
No, that's a fact.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's an important point. Thank you, trustee Smith.
That is an important point. Thank you.
I think it's important. I said it earlier before, let's just make sure we deal in truth and not opinion in the windows and those types of things, because I think the public deserves what's true.
Yeah, and I wasn't there at the end, so I'll accept that, and I misspoke. I do want to express a concern about that committee, that it's made up of six elected representatives from the city, Sparks, Reno, and county commission. It just seems that they, it's not their money. They wouldn't be inclined to vote against building a new school in their district. It seems to me that the makeup of this committee is not one that reflects the public. If I was to be honest, I'd say, let's have one, every trustee appoint one member. You have a gentleman that, last I checked, was the president of A1.
Trusty Church, I'm going to pull you in a little bit, because the composition of the committee is not on the agenda, and I was just kind of, so it was.
Okay, I'll move on.
If you can stay focused on the agenda, you know how that is, sir.
Yeah, I think it's related, but it's, I get it. I'll move on.
Thank you.
We don't have, am I correct from that meeting, what I understood? We couldn't bond option one if we wanted to. We are bonded out if we approved this today.
That's correct.
And therefore, if something comes up soon, and we say, wow, this is unplanned, we wouldn't have the bonding ability for that. And if that's correct, how long till we have that bonding ability?
So that question was discussed at some length at the committee, and really, it's into the fall of 2022 that we would be able to proceed through the steps necessary to receive the approval to issue additional debt.
Okay, and what I think I heard was that one of the major problems was we didn't have sufficient bidders that we would like to see. Essentially, they are tapped out on other projects. Is that what I think I heard?
Yeah, certainly, there were a number of scopes on this project that didn't receive as much participation or multiple bidders as we would have liked to have seen.
And no matter what, we're looking at August of 2024 before, if we do with option two, correct?
So option, it's 2025.
Yep.
2025.
Yep.
Best-case scenario. So maybe it's semantics, but I heard the term used there, essential. If these, obviously till 2025 anyway, but does it appear, this is a, this is not a high school, it's a CTE academy. Do we have adequate space at existing high schools, including the new Hug High that'll open, to accommodate these students that can't go there?
So I think that's an important point that was also debated by the committee. This project, first of all, absolutely is a high school. It is a ninth through 12th grade, comprehensive high school. However, the need for the project is not primarily born out of an overcrowding type of scenario, the likes of which we've been dealing with in many of our new schools for several years now, but rather a need for career and technical education. So in the interim, the students who would otherwise attend this school in 2025 and beyond potentially, will have adequate, more than adequate, high school facilities across the district. That's where they're attending school now.
Thank you for that. Again, I misspoke. Thank you for that clarification that it is a high school. So if this were, if we did take option two, that, does that come back to the capital projects committee and back to the trustees for approval of whatever is bid?
Yeah, so option two, we would have to come back to the school board for approval of any construction contracts, and should we ultimately need to augment the budget beyond what's already been approved, that would have to come back to the committee and the board to see the budget increased, and then all construction contracts would come back to the board for approval.
Okay, thank you. So I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this. So roughly 35 million would not have to go back to capital projects, would just come directly to us?
Any additional budget authority has to go to the committee first and then the board, but within the budget that has already been approved by the committee, any future contracts against that budget just go directly to the board.
If I might add, 112 million dollars has been approved.
I see.
If it goes forward as planned, it would cost an additional 35 million, and that's why the recommendation for the delay. So there isn't a 35 million that's out there, that's not the case. It's 112 million dollars.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, because again, this is very confusing. I'm not a accountant or a builder, so I'm really trying to get my, spent a lot of time trying to get my head this weekend and in the past on this. And I'm going to try to wrap it up. I think I'm about done. I can always, you know, come in later with other questions, but I'm sorry.
No, by all means.
Okay.
Take your time down.
My hearing aid, and I sometimes get, it's hard, it's hard for the hearing agent.
You all good? I have a response from council from early on, and then I want you, you know, you guys, we have a very long schedule of day, and we have a high school graduation.
Yeah, and this is extremely, but this is extremely important. All right, that's enough questions for now.
I appreciate it. Thank you, trustee church. Counsel, if you would mind.
Adam, I'm going to ask you a question. Is that okay? All right. So if I understand correctly, what we're looking at right now is Debbie Smith Career Technical Education Academy High School. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we're looking for action to do a phased delivery approach to respond to construction market pricing? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the issue raised by trustee church, I'm a little confused on what it is. I think it's either notice and/or failure to provide appropriate support material. With regard to notice, I think the public, what the NRS says is 2410203 subsection, 241020 subsection three, subsection C says, excuse me, A, says that you have to have a clear and complete, man, D, sorry, a clear and complete statement of the topic scheduled to be considered. As somebody who actually prosecuted the clear and complete case against the Board of Regents, I would suggest that this is clear and complete. The average member of the public would understand that they're talking about the Debbie Smith Career Technical Education Academy, and the average member of the public would understand that this is a phased delivery approach. With regard to as recommended by the capital funding protection committee, Adam, if I recall correctly, we do these in so close a nature to the board of trustees. in nature to the Board of Trustees. When I say these, I mean the Capital Funding Protection Committee means that there's, oftentimes, you put on the agenda that it's going to be approved, presuming it's going to be approved before it's actually approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And in your experience, that's common in public sector? I'll tell you, it's common in my 25 years of experience on public bodies, but representing public bodies. Is that correct in your experience?
Yes.
Okay. So if anybody wanted to know what happened, they would be more than willing to look at, could look at the video. And/or, do I have any reason to think that you're misrepresenting what occurred at the meeting, Adam? Or would this board have any reason to?
No.
So, sorry, will you answer verbally? I know you're shaking your head. No?
No.
Okay. So as long as the, this Board of Trustees is comfortable accepting Mr. Circe's representations on what occurred, which you have to make on your own, I don't see a notice issue for the open meeting law. And with regard to support material, support material can come in at any time. It can come in at this meeting. It can come in days before the meeting. It can be verbal in nature. And I would suggest that in this case, Adam's representation of the vote that occurred would be appropriate support material that was brought at this meeting. Obviously, this isn't the type of support material that would get uploaded to a website because it's his verbal representation. But he can create the record for you. I would suggest that the only thing the open meeting law contemplates is that there's a clear, or I want to suggest this is what the law says, is that there's a clear and complete statement of what you're going to be considered. It does not require, and this is a mistake that we commonly make, a clear and complete statement on what your action's going to be. It's your job to decide what the action is. Staff gives you recommendations, but it's ultimately your job to decide. So how could you ever create an agenda that says this is what our actions are going to be? That's not the intent. The intent of the open meeting law is a clear and complete statement about what you're going to consider at the meeting. And so I think this meets notice. I think Adam's created a nice record along with the board president. I also think that any material that's provided today, I mean, he, you know, you have to decide whether or not you want to trust your, your chief. I can't imagine you wouldn't. But that, that's up to you. So I don't see an open meeting law issue.
I appreciate that, Counsel. Additionally, I also took into consideration, not because it's necessary, but because I can see him in my line of sight, our Chief Financial Officer was also at the meeting and was nodding as those statements were made regarding the motion and the amendment. So there is, and he continues to nod. And so that, that continues to be confirmation that, as you remembered and looked through, that, that continued that. So that certainly, certainly surprised from, from my standpoint. So I see several lights on. I think Trustee Rodriguez was first, and then we'll jump over to Trustee Mayberry, and then to Trustee Smith. Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think my question might be more for Mark CFO Mathers. My question is basically, what would the ballpark figure be for just going ahead with option three, definitely holding this and have an abandoned piece of school district property out there? As far as like, what ballpark? Police presence, vandalism, things like that? What, can you kind of?
You're asking whether the cost or whether the concerns, or maybe all of the above?
Yes, yeah.
I think, I mean, Adam may be actually better to answer that. But I think our concern is that it lays fallow, unattended. So there is some potential liability if someone comes onto the property unless you, you know, procure security services to patrol it and so forth. So for it to be paused indefinitely kind of exposes that facility to both security issues, but also just the degradation of the facility itself over, over time by it being completely neglected.
I mean, we'd still be paying for power, water, all that stuff to the building, even though it's, it's since abandoned? Is that correct?
I mean, it wouldn't be in use, so the consumption would be less. But, you know, there are certain systems in the building that would have to be maintained. They can't just be shut off indefinitely.
Like fire alarms, things like that?
Yep, absolutely. And we would likely have to hire some type of security or property management type of operation that would probably be in the range of $20,000 a month for a campus of that size and just to address the liability. Again, in addition to any public perception that-
Right.
-that vacant property would-
And, uh, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, I do have a couple of, I mean, I'm sure, first of all, I think what you guys have done at the Capital Funding Committee, I don't think anyone's could have planned for a war in Ukraine to impact our steel than would. I don't, so it's kind of going back to someone that made a statement with COVID. I think this is more of a global issue as far as war conflicts going. I mean, you couldn't plan for that, right? I mean, when we were talking about this, it was in December, and a war began in February. So I mean, it's kind of hard to predict, I would think.
Yeah, I go back, I mean, every best practice and subject matter expert was brought to bear in delivering or developing this budget. And despite all of those efforts and planning, we've still been set with this degree of unexpected occurrence.
And I'm just thinking, you know, I'm just one trustee here, but I'm thinking this is more of an investment into our community. I mean, the purpose of CTE, of the Debbie Smith CTE is, is for careers, right? It's, it's to, you know, it's to have kids graduate with a, with a skill set, culinary, vet tech, manufacturing, marketing. I mean, so this is more of an investment. So I, I do just hear from what Mr. Circe stated, and hearing that we're looking at spending $20,000, $30,000 a month on an abandoned building, I just don't see how that's physically conservative or responsible with that. I am ready to make a motion if it's, if it's okay.
Well, then we do have a couple of other comments. So why, why don't we get those? And I'll come back to your motion, if you, if you may. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, President Taylor. And thank you for bringing this to us and shedding the light on some of these challenges and being transparent. You know, it's, other public agencies may have just kind of pushed this through, you know, under the radar. So thank you for coming forward and, and being honest. Secondly, there's no confusion for me. It's a $35 million shortfall that we're looking at phased into a, a building, right? So pretty straightforward. Question I have is, as before I was on the board, what, what kind of commitment did we have to this project early on? Was there any WC1 announcement or declaration that, that it would include a new Career Technical Center?
Yeah, it, it has always been a part of the program of projects that was specifically identified on the ballot measure in 2016, and has long been intended that with the opening of the new Proctor Hug High School at Wild Creek, creating a vacant campus here at McCarran and Sutro, that it would be repurposed into a career and technical academy. We've been working towards this objective for some six years now.
Uh, the second question I have is, could we, could we reduce the project and scope and still build it within budget? Has there been any discussion on that?
I think that's part of our opportunities with our value engineering and working with our academics to see what we can value engineer in that or take scope out to still create that facility and provide the academics for our students' needs. We did go through a very rigorous process with academics in the CTE to determine what academies went there and what spaces they needed, and when, and then went through an EdSpec process to determine what size those are. Because just putting in something just to, you know, reduce it by 50%, it may not provide the facilities and the equipment that the students need to actually learn that skill.
Right. The other question I have is, is, and I think you, you said this, Adam, I just want to get it on the record. I mean, there aren't any insurances that the cost will decrease if we move forward on a phased approach. I mean, we're, you know, we're hearing recession, recession, recession. It seems like it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. I mean, I'm clearly concerned with, with that piece.
As with any project or decision-making process, there's aspects within our control and aspects not within our control. So, you know, related to the design, related to the contract language, related to the timing or the actual phasing with, with which we let these contracts. But actually, what the market conditions will be six, 12-plus months from now is something no one's willing to speculate on.
Yeah, I'm just sort of, I'm just concerned with the continuing cost increases as opposed to cost decreases, hence finding a reduction in, in the, in the project. Thank you, Madam.
I, I appreciate that, Trustee Mayberry. Just a couple of things before we continue. Thank you, Mr. Circe, for explaining that this project has been on, on the, on the books, so to speak, since the voters voted for it back in 2016. So it certainly has been ongoing since then. Also, I'm gonna just take a, a bit of a point of privilege and ask our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Asher, to come. Because of the questions, he took the opportunity to go back and review the video from the meeting to make it absolutely certain and clear so that it clears up any questions whatsoever. I think we're all feel comfortable with where we are, but this will make sure absolutely what it is that you observed during this pertaining to the motion, sir, if you would. And then we'll go back to jump over to, uh, Trustee Smith.
P. Dutchart, Chief Operating Officer. So I was also at the meeting on June 2nd of the Capital Funding Protection Committee. So I did go back and listen to the audio and the video. And basically, after the motion was made by Member Cardinal, a friendly request, as they phrased it, by Member Ivory was made and approved by Member Cardinal, who made the motion, that an escalation clause be included in this contract. Now, no specifics were made about what that escalation contract would be. It was really the discussion would be that it would be determined by staff. And, I mean, there's a lot of ways an escalation contract can be made, so they did not get into specifics of that. He also wanted to have, add additional funds into the contingency budget for escalation so that staff would not have to return based on escalation. But due to the vagueness legal, which was Legal Counsel Sarah Montalvo asked that this not be included, which was agreed upon by Member Ivory, and so that was not included in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. Appreciate that. Your memory is better than you thought, Mr. Circe. Okay, we'll go on. Trustee Smith?
Thank you. I'll keep this brief. I support option two. As Trustee Mayberry was mentioning, one of the benefits to it is that it does allow some agility in the process. We get to review what those sections are. We get to see what the costs are at that time. There could be some efficiencies. But that is definitely the direction that I'm leading, and I appreciate the rest of the comments from my colleagues. So I'll defer to whoever's next or to the motion.
Right before the motion, we, we missed a public comment. The card was turned in, and the number was misread. So we're gonna go and take that. And then we'll go to you, Trustee Rodriguez, for the motion. JJ?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran. Apologies for overlooking your, your, your card, sir.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, I know my handways, they're terrible. Yes. Okay, so I do support option two, oppose option one and three. So because, it's essentially because of a due to a high inflation cost, the WC1, the option one seemed like this is not best option for Washington School District because that costs a lot of money and costs burden to build a building because of a, we have a very low surprise of a construction criteria and very high demand for this project to be built at Debbie Smith by the beginning of 2024 school, 2025 school year. And I feel like option two is the best option. And then option three is like, it's a positive immediately because that will disadvantage future students who want to go to CTE high schools, such as AJCT or any academy that they want to. And, uh, and at their, and at, in this Washington School District should commit to this project. So I think the, because this is a, this is a global pandemic of inflation since COVID-19 is over. So now in the inflation pandemic begins. So I think that we have to pass option one and then go to option two because that here, option two, I think it might be a, this year or so down in inflation. So options one is not best option because of a inflation overdue. And then option two, three, that will disadvantage students that create ACCT more reckless, have a, give accepted ways, go getting less and less, more students wanting to go to ACCT high school, you know, for their career, the benefit of a career and maybe school joy by their parents, their teacher, or community members. I think the option two is the best way option, but I feel sorry for the current sixth grade or seventh grade who are starting 2022, 2023 school year that will not get to opportunity to start and Debbie Smith, it's CTE or Academy. So that could my sister. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. We're, we'll turn to, uh, Trustee Rodriguez for a motion, sir.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I will make a motion here in a second. I do want to make a final statement that, um, I, I'm, I'm apologize that this was delayed by a week. This doesn't seem to be anything to do with contributions. It seems to be more of a hunt for something that may not be there. I'll also state that I will support option two. I don't believe abandoning a building that costs a quarter million dollars a year just to wait and see and hope that things get better is the right option. So I do look at, this is investment in our community and our students. And with that, I am happy to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves proceeding with option two, the pursue a phased approach to delivering the construction of the Debbie Smith Career and Technical Education Academy High School, deferring immediate construction to the best, adjust, and balance the financial constraints and of the district with the need and commitment to this critical project as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez and Dr. Nicolet. Any further discussion? Trustee Church?
Yes, I'll be very brief. Just want to explain my, my vote. This is not an easy one. I, I get both sides. It's not an easy one. We've gone from $80 million to $112, $147 million. One of the big concerns, and this, this is one of the bigger ones in my mind, is the fact that there were not adequate bidders that normally would have met our expectations. And by postponing it, we would have more bidders. Nobody has a crystal ball. Nobody knows the economy. That's a tough one. One of the things that really concerns me is with this, we're bonded out. There's no extra money in the piggy bank for some kind of an emergency that might require bonding. I, I also hasn't been mentioned, but we have a new superintendent starting in about 11 days. And, you know, there may be a new set of eyes on. And so I'm gonna vote no. I'm gonna vote for, my vote would be for delaying the decision. So I guess that's option three. But so I'm gonna vote no on this.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Any further discussion? Dr. Nicolet, your lights on? No, you're always waiting for the vote. Okay. Although, yes, yes.
I just want to clarify for the record that we are not actually approving $147 million.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. I almost did that, but then it's like this, no, it's a, what we're saying is we're staying at $112 million. Anything additional, as Mr. Circe says and Ms. Samerson, Ms. Zimmerman alluded to, needs to come back to the board. So again, back to let's put out there what's really out there. And I, I for once, since I'm talking, I'll say this. I don't want to delay this for our students. Our community has said that we need more CTE. Our students, that number is growing like crazy. They, they want, they have a great interest in this. And if we can continue this commitment, I think that's critically important for the continued academic success of our students and the need of our community. So I think our community would be disappointed if we put this off, quite frankly. So I'm certainly in support of the motion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Nay.
The motion carries. At the record show it is six to one. Thank you both so much. Mr. Circe, you don't get to go away. Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. We'll go on to 2.02. Presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the updated Washoe County School District fiscal year 2023 to 2027 five-year capital improvement plan to include the addition of four full-time positions approved by the Board of Trustees and movement of a design phase for a new elementary school to year one instead of year two, as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. Mr. Mathers and Mr. Circe are sitting before us. I want to just clarify a couple of things. Those positions have already been approved. So this, this isn't, this isn't, you, you can say if you want, Ms. Zimmerman. This, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, this is some riveting stuff right here. I do want to make just a couple of clarifications. Those positions have already been approved, so this is not a conversation about those positions. They've already, it's just saying that's included in this approval on the one hand. Secondly, just as a, a point of a clarification and correction, is we don't have a capital, we don't have a capital improvement committee. We have a Capital Funding Protection Committee. And as we discussed, and let's make sure we get that correct on the record. Okay, that being said, Mr. Mathers, I think you're gonna start, sir?
Thank you. Yes, Mark Mathers, CFO. Thank you, Madam President. Dr. McMill, trustees, you summarized it well. Really, there are only two changes to the CIP that we're asking you to make. And for clarification, the, the five-year capital improvement plan doesn't have to be submitted to the state until August 1st. So there's time to, there was time to do this. But the first one was to include the four positions approved by the board as part of our final budget. And then the second change- And then the second change was to move up design of what we call, we call it elementary school number five from year two of the plan to year one, and that's for a potential new elementary school in the North Spanish Springs area. Moving up design to year one will allow us to do that and be ready to build a new school if necessary in year three. So those are the two changes. That second change obviously is no net change. We're just moving up one year. So those are the two changes for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mathers. Do we have any public comment on this, JJ? None? Okay, we'll bring it back here to the board. You see what's before us, those two changes as explained by Mr. Mathers. Trustee Church?
I'll try to be brief. I think I can be. If things change, and please, no more changes like we've had the last three or four years. Not you, I mean, the economy, the COVID, everything. If something changes, how do we as a board or the superintendent go about doing that within the framework of this?
Does that make sense?
In other words, what authority does the board or the superintendent say, well, things have changed, we're going to change this plan?
So you can, so Mark Mathers, again, for the record, you can modify the capital improvement program mid-year if necessary, and we can also augment our budget for any projects that are funded in year one as necessary if there are available resources.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Church. Further questions? Please, seeing none, we're ready for a motion if that's the pleasure of the board. Got a motion by Trustee Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Nicolet. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of agenda item 2.02, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. At the record show, it is unanimous. Mr. Circe, you get to stay again. On to agenda item 2.03. Presentation, discussion and possible action to approve the 2021-22E major projects program that includes projects throughout the Washoe County School District pursuant to the attached list of program projects and associated costs for each project in the amount of $47 million as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. And now Ms. Zimmerman joins Mr. Circe again. We'll turn it over to you.
Okay, just really quickly, and then we'll get into the presentations. These are, were three separate items at Capital Funding Protection Committee for information with one action. This will be condensed into one sort of run-on presentation covering three main subcategories of the ultimate recommendation. So I just wanted to kind of give that context. We're going to start off with our annual capital renewal program. These are our roofs and boilers and painting and administration of our entire bond program for FY '23. And here to walk you through that is our Deputy Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Circe. So here for your FY 2023 capital renewal program, this line item is, this is a line item in the CIP. So every year, it's been for 40 million for the last couple of years. So you've already approved the CIP. This is just a deeper dive into what those actually look like in specific projects at specific schools. So just to give you a little bit of a recap for last year, 2022 capital renewal, we have bid, as of the time we did this, 113 projects and spent over $26 million to complete those. So we're moving and grooving and making repairs in our older schools, which is our bread and butter and kind of an upbeat thing. We like to do that in all of those because it increases the academic performance, we feel, you know, creates those environments for staff and students. So this is, this is where we, we earn our keep, per se. So the systematic process that we go through to create these spreadsheets that you'll see in the total of $40 million, we use our facilities condition index, which is basically our asset management for our building systems. We rate them based off of lifecycle and serviceability, and that's how they come, they come to the top, and then we pick them off the top, which are the most needed items to be done. And those are done through annual inspections by our environmental safety and assessment department. We review these with our supervisors of our shops. We have carpenter shops, HVACs, painters. We review, sit down and review the list with them. They go over them and tell us, you know, what is their most needed out of these or where have they been in repairing them? Where are the most work orders? Where are the most leak that we've seen in roofs and that kind of stuff? So we've tried to follow that along with our FICUS and inform that system. We also take direction from our Safe and Healthy Schools Commission with our safety projects. So here's the list that we have, and it's, it's the same as last year in the format in that we start with ADA. We are putting braille signs in all of our schools that were, that were built prior to the ADA being approved and going through all those, and that's to keep us within our Title II ADA accommodations. There's a lot of work still to be done with those in our older schools. Lead and asbestos, we still have some piping that we might need to take off the asbestos so that we can maintain those easier. The next one is carpentry. That encompasses, carpentry encompasses a lot. It's not just carpentry items, but it's locks, it's painting and all of that. And as you can see, some of our, what we call our pinwheel schools, moss, winnebucka, are in need of sealing and painting. They're that old now. We do a rigorous kind of request for department request with, within the school district. And with this one, we are actually looking at putting washers and dryers in some of our aging elementary schools that don't have them so that we can wash items needed there. It's very hard to put them in there because we have to vent them and put water sources for them, but that is a commitment we're making to those aging schools that don't have those facilities. Electronics, the biggest item in electronics is our fire alarms, and those are a life safety issue, and so we're really keen on keeping those up. Those are, we can't find parts for those anymore, so that's what makes them ready to be replaced. We have our MEP, which is our little acronym for mechanical, electrical and plumbing. It encompasses all of those items. HVAC, we do a lot of that. We do a lot of roof replacements because of the leaks that we see in our schools and our aging schools. And then we have a lot of hot water heaters that are going out in those pinwheels as well. It's time, they're, you know, they were built in the 90s, so they're 30 some odd years old now. So it's time to invest in those as well. We do have a requirement for warm water in classrooms for the health department, so we try to, we have to keep up with those items. Paving, you notice that we have pavement replacement and repair. We have, we have tried and we've lived out our useful life in our pavement, and so it's time to repair them and cut out and replace sections of them as needed. Safety and security, we have AACT in that middle. We have those storefronts. We're going to do some improvements in there for safety and security for line of sight to be in, up to speed with what we're doing in our other schools in that, in that instance. We have, still have our Safe and Healthy Schools prioritized projects, which we're working on the single points of entry and updating those processes. They, you'll also see on here, we have program contingency, construction management support. Those are basically professional services to help augment us as well as if we have a bid that might be a little bit over to allow us to award that if, if it's something of such an emergency that we need to do that. The program administration is on there as well. That is supplies for our department. That's our overhead, but it also takes care of actual positions like buyers and those that you see IT analysts that come out and, and do things in our new schools and in our schools as we shut them down and need to move those parts and pieces around. It pays for those kind of positions that support us as well. It's not just us and capital projects, but it also pays for our copiers, our copy paper and all of our supplies and computers as needed for that. And I show this kind of wheel with all the percentages just to show you that it's in line with what we have appropriated for each of those categories as of last year's as well. So we try to be consistent. Our mantra is warm, safe and dry, and so you'll see we spend a lot more money in roofing and HVAC because that's where we, we see the need. So that is for the 40 million that you'll see in this major projects and the conclusion of that presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions on the renewal? It's exciting to renew the old schools.
They deserve it.
For those students and those families and those staff members, they're there absolutely. Trustee Rodriguez?
Presenting. Pre-presentation.
No, they have more.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay, that's just part one. We have three parts. That's part one. Okay, I know. Yeah. I know, I thought you were leaving. I was going to say, I think we have more slides. Okay.
I have two colleagues who are going to be delivering the next presentation, so I'm going to move to the podium really quick just to introduce our Chief Academic Officer and Chief Information Officer. This next couple of slides deal with our annual device refresh program. You may have noted in the capital renewal program, a line item titled IT infrastructure. Those are our servers within the schools, our Wi-Fi, things that are hard and attached to the building that are considered facility assets. This device refresh program is in potentially its second year of existence and speaks to a similar manner of annual renewal, similar to our building assets, but speaking to our device assets. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Chris Turner and Troy Parks. Thank you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. So today, to set the agenda, we'll talk about the background of the program, the history that went into this ongoing program. We will also introduce Dr. Troy Parks, who will speak to how this program has affected teaching and learning in schools. We'll also have Chief Financial Officer Mathers, who will reiterate or recover how this is financed, and then we have our proposal. So moving forward, this is, this is the historical pieces of what we're proposing today for renewal. Back in the summer of 2020, we, we were, we presented on August 25th our strategic technology plan, but we realized that that was just a framework. It had no sustainability that was associated with it. So a framework or a governance model without the opportunity for devices in the buildings seemed hollow, so we split it in half and we presented a sustainability portion in early 2021, as you can see from the slides. Then moving forward, after we clarified our sustainability plan, we presented it to the Capital Funding Protection Committee on June 3, 2021, and then immediately moved it to the board meeting, which met approval on June 8, 2021. We felt like the strategic technology plan answered to sustainability, like I already mentioned, but there's some other pieces that we felt were important in terms of district operation. Formerly, devices were renewed in the buildings at a building-by-building level. There was, it was very decentralized. There was no organization. There was no schedule, and buildings had, there was differences between buildings that had budget opportunities to refresh devices and other buildings that were sort of left in the middle that weren't brand new and didn't have extra funding available through federal sources, and they were sort of in the middle, and they were very unrefreshed that sort of 90% of our schools. We also felt like this was an opportunity to lift the operational burden from the school principals and the, the operational burden for refreshing, shopping for, budgeting for their own devices, not just student devices, but also teacher devices. So if we could take that opportunity and remove it from their obligation and centralize it in IT, we felt like that was a tremendous opportunity for, for schools' principals to get back to practicing what they're trained for, not, not buying things, but also, but being the principal teacher of the building. And then finally, we thought that with a centralized sort of approach to purchasing, we felt like we could leverage economies of scale, and instead of a building buying 20 devices or 30 devices year over year, if we, if we bid out for 10,000 devices, we could see advantaged pricing. So we were very pleased with, with this approach that, that took that, that burden away from the school buildings. We wanted to, foremost, we wanted to provide all of our students with an equal opportunity to learn in the district. We had those brand new, we had a handful of brand new buildings that were equipped with one-to-one devices. We have other buildings that have federal resources that augment their computer inventories. And then there, like I talked about, there's a tremendous middle ground, you know, 80%, 90% of our schools that were in that area where they didn't have those funding advantages or that newness, that new construction that allowed them to have all those devices. So all of those ideas went into our thinking and our planning, and we presented it to the Capital Funding Protection Committee and then interned the board about a year ago. Okay, so this is what we did. This is, this was actually, this was our proposal last year. We took, we, we tried to measure out what we thought was the absolute, given the resources that we had, how long can a laptop last? And we, we thought that, you know, industry standards might be three years for laptops. We stretched it out to five. We wanted to ensure that we could make, meet the greater, greatest good that we could in the district. So maximizing out to five years allows us to refresh at rates that meets about 80% of our student enrollment. But at the top there, bullet point one, we looked at the teachers. We had, as of May 2021, we had 3,840 teachers. If we put them on a five-year rotational basis, we would refresh about 768 laptops per year. And in those figures, we will reexamine those figures year over year. That 3,840 isn't what we work off of this year and next year. We're very adaptive to that. We're trying to be very responsive to that. We estimated going into it, we thought about looking at the market and looking at the, the spec of the laptop we were looking at. We thought that the average cost might come to about $650 per teacher device, and so multiplying 768 teachers, which is one-fifth of the, of the full-time equivalent, times the $650 item cost, it came out to about $500,000. Moving to students, that enrollment figure was accurate as of May 31, 2021, and we used that same sort of formula, 20%, we come out to 9,856 students. We multiply that times our estimated laptop cost, and it comes out to be 3,942,000. And so if you add those two figures, it's about the 4.5 million that was allocated to us last year. Interestingly, there's some takeaways, actually, and I'll speak about those in a minute based on the estimated costs. Okay, so where did we end up landing? We ended up purchasing 735 laptops for teachers, and when this presentation was authored, we were still awaiting the docking stations that would go with them. The docking stations, we felt were necessary to ease the transition from using a desktop environment to a laptop environment and allowing the classroom teachers to link to the classroom technology that's installed in the classroom so they could have the interactivity and project what's going on on the laptop up to the screens that are in, in the classrooms. We also purchased 8,913 laptops and distributed them to 97 schools, and 97 doesn't represent all of our buildings. It's because we have a number of those new construction buildings and they have new devices already, so it was scaled back. But one interesting piece that we discovered as we went through this process was we had a tremendous investment in tablets that are used by K-2 students, and so we felt like it was fair for us to renew that technology as well. So we bought 1,020 iPads for use with all of our K-2 students, and we intend to continue that investment to meet the needs of all of our students. And then finally, as part of the process, an important feature of renewing devices in the district includes getting rid of, discarding e-wasting laptops that are out of date, out of service, broken, damaged. And what we did, the final figures as of when we wrote this presentation, we e-wasted nearly 9,000 devices. E-waste is important, not just because it lightens our inventory, but operationally, outdated devices on our network can make us vulnerable to security, security vulnerability. So we want to ensure that we're using the most up-to-date operational tools that are available to us. Let's see. Moving on to slide six, some of the lessons, it's important that we cover the lessons that we learned over the preceding year. So one of the lessons that we learned involved the logistics, as you can see from the slide. Onboarding approximately 10,000 laptops in a year is challenging for a number of reasons. There are storage issues. We have ongoing storage placement issues. Where do we, where do we place all of these boxes? These, we're talking pallet after pallet after pallet of laptops, 50 or 60 pallets. So thankfully, there were some supply chain issues. We did only receive the teacher laptops last month in May, so that, though, those laptops didn't present us the challenge that the student devices did. And then there was processing issues. There's a tremendous investment in, of personnel in the processing, in the imaging of the devices year over year. So we, we discovered that, and obviously, we were anticipating it, but it turns out that we had an opportunity with our student intern program that was passed by the board that we're very thankful for. We have five student interns in the IT department. We have five student interns in the IT department, and we're very pleased with all the contributions that they're making, not only in the department-wide, but also they do a lot of processing, and it gives them a lot of hands-on tech experience that they may not receive at UNR or Truckee One of the discoveries that we had, as we pushed out nearly 10,000 devices to schools, was how were schools supposed to securely store the devices as well as charge them overnight? Since we are no longer, right now, at this moment, a one-to-one district, we're a technology-rich district, we were challenged with the idea of what do we do with all these devices? It's unsafe for them to just sit in a pile. They're not meant to sit, you know, 10 on top of each other. It's not good for the chassis of the laptop. In addition to that, it's not secure, and in addition to that, how do we charge them? So one of our discoveries was, it was sort of this unfunded mandate that principals had to discover their own means for securing and charging the devices. So we do have federal grant opportunities to purchase carts, and that is in the works, and we're still awaiting word on how that's developing with the other departments that are involved. E-waste, as positive of an opportunity as e-waste is for us, as we reduce the risky number of devices that are still in our inventory, it turned out that e-wasting nine or 10,000 devices was very impactful on our vendor. So we had to, and then there was logistical issues about where the devices end up and where the vendor picks them up, because there's internal warehouse issues, not issues, there's internal scheduling that's required to have all the devices sent to a central location. Sometimes in some of those bigger buildings, some of our high schools, they had hundreds of devices to e-waste, and so we worked with the vendor, our e-waste vendor, to pick them up directly from the school buildings, which was a tremendous advantage. As soon as we realized that there was a problem logistically with e-waste, we were able to adapt, and we're thankful that the vendor was able to adapt as well. Communications, I'll talk about communications is important to any sort of large project, and we felt like we very thoroughly and capably communicated the project. Still, we were met with issues or a lack of communication, let's just say. So there were moments where school personnel weren't fully informed about some of the overarching pieces of the project, but our project manager was able to communicate to principals directly, and we worked those out. It just, you know, I said in the Capital Funding Protection Committee presentation that any amount of communications is simply not enough. And so we'll continue to evaluate how we communicate the project and how we get the word out to school personnel. Let me find myself in my notes. Okay, moving on, HR, I already discussed the advantages of having the student intern For us, I'll speak about the IT department, it's been a tremendous opportunity for us to realize some additional help at very reduced cost. The students are part-time, and there's no benefits associated with their employment. We work around their student schedules, and of course, it's summertime, so we're finding that not many of them or any of them are in summer school, so their schedules are very flexible. That has been tremendous for our inventorying, unboxing, imaging, reboxing, and reshipping to schools. So that's all the logistical pieces. That would be an opportunity for us in the future. As we undergo our normal operations, we felt like we were at sort of our critical capacity to fulfill the district operations, and adding 10,000 devices a year adds an additional processing opportunity for us, let's say. And so we're going to continue to look for opportunities to maximize what we have in order to fulfill this program. So speaking to the personnel piece, we have been working with our vendors and our manufacturers to stagger the shipments. Maybe instead of 10,000 devices at a time, we'll get it cut into quarters, and we're also looking at pre-processing the devices and having them shipped directly to schools. Those conversations are still ongoing with our distribution vendor, and we think that that adds a tremendous opportunity. With the resources that we're given, with the personnel that we have, we think that breaking up the shipments and then shipping them directly to schools and then having our personnel be there meets a number of the challenges that we face in terms of storage and in terms of processing. Let's see, school operations. So with the Nevada Department of Education recently changing or providing guidance on how we can treat snow days and smoke days, we do see the advantage of having these devices in the building and ready for student distribution in anticipation of a storm or a smoke day. So no longer do you get to take the day off and sled down the hill, unfortunately. As our days are used up and we meet with inclement weather problems, unfortunately, you'll still be required to participate in school. Some of the other challenges or some of the other ideas that we came across as we went through this first year were ideas that we also realized were going to be a challenge last year. This refresh program is only for school devices that are used in classrooms. That's the capacity. So what about school computer labs? We have identified a grant opportunity to refresh all the school computer labs in the district in one, all 6,000 in one opportunity. So we're still awaiting word on whether we were successful in that grant application. We're excited about that opportunity. And then some of the other challenges that were surfaced during this first year, and something that we certainly anticipated, a conversation that was had in this space last year, was what about other classroom technology? What about the installed classroom technology like sound fields, like we're using right now, or the displays? And that's well outside of the scope of our program, and we're not interested in expanding the program, because if we do, with the resources that we have, we will be very limited in terms of how many laptops we can renew. Let's see, let's move forward. And now, having spoken about all of those, what we learned and what the program was and what we accomplished, now I'll move this over to Dr. Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Good morning, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, and Board of Trustees. For the record, Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer. Appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this. From an academic perspective, we're always asking ourselves, what are the most appropriate ways for our students to have technology? And in reflecting on where we started, March 2020, we have come a long ways, and I'm very proud of the work that we've been able to do. Always the bottom line in a school district is student learning outcomes. When we focus on equity, a lot of emphasis is put on those outcomes. So as we looked at this, we were able to see many of the things that we do really well. Obviously, a part of our technologies is that we always have to be aware of the dangers that we have for our students when they access online, so we do a really strong six-unit digital citizenship that is required at every level. And if you were in classrooms recently this year, you probably saw examples of the opportunities that it presents for us around a blended learning opportunity. In a lot of our elementary schools that have enough devices, you would see them being utilized during the Tier One School Day, where we're teaching the standards, and there might be centers where the students go, and they're actually learning how to utilize the tool of technology to learn. You might have seen the flipped classroom, where our high school students sometimes will have a video that they view in the evening, and their job kind of along the lines of college and career preparedness. They have some work at night, and they come to the school during the day, and then they discuss that lesson that they saw last night. Another really important progress that we've had is, in our district, for our teachers, we have almost every part of our curriculum on Teams that teachers can access at any moment. That's not just your standard, your essential standards, but when the assessments occur, the pacing of your English Language Arts and your math, that is all stored on Teams, so we no longer have to go to a hard file, but can access electronically. All right, thank you. Right today, as you well know, summer school started, and with that, if you recall, we tried to really focus on our students that needed in-person summer school the most, but we also wanted to have as many students engaging and learning during the summer, so we don't get as much learning loss. So this year, we did come up with our Summer School Challenge, where we set home laptops with students, and we encouraged them to participate virtually, and we're keeping track of that simply by noting which students are accessing the programming. And much of the programs that we were able to purchase during the pandemic, they take students from where they're at and progress them to where they need to get to. So we're excited to see the impacts of student learning that we have there. As Dr. Turner mentioned, we're also hopefully not going to have any, but smoke days, we know in the early, late summer and early fall, those are potential. We also have had snow days in the past, where while I would say the sledding would be encouraged, but also a decent amount of online check-in virtually with your teacher and accomplish some work during the day. Again, we're, from the Office of Academics Support, we're always asking ourselves, what is the most appropriate use of this tool for student learning outcomes? So our 21st Century team is always looking at providing professional learning to help teachers best meet the needs of their students. And with that, I will turn it over to CFO Mark Mathers.
Okay, just a brief reminder, again, the funding source for our PC Refresh Program is the property tax debt rate the school district receives. That's 38.85 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. We were able to transfer 4.56 million for devices in '22, and nearly all of that has been spent or encumbered to date, so that's good. So that resulted in a little less than 11,000 laptops and tablets being funded. And then we've also received, and hopefully will continue to receive, grant funding for additional devices. And so you can see there, in '22, we received an FCC grant of $2 million. I know our grants department is pursuing other opportunities. So the game plan for fiscal year '23 will be largely the same. We will transfer any revenues over and above debt service for the PC Refresh Program, and we'll continue to pursue grants vigorously in '23.
Thank you, CFO Mathers. So that brings us to our proposal. One piece that I failed to mention was the FCC grant that we applied for last year allowed us to refresh the entirety of the teacher devices in one year. We knew that there were areas where we had very old devices. Many of our teachers were using desktops. We want to emphasize that they have the ability and the mobility to respond and to plan and to communicate wherever they're at. So we did enjoy the successful outcome of the FCC's Emergency Connectivity Grant to the $2 million, and that will allow the refresh of the entire teacher computer inventory in this year. So we're at work on that over the summer. So moving forward, in anticipation of a renewal of this proposal, and because we are the fortunate recipients of that FCC $2 million Emergency Connectivity Grant that will accelerate the renewal of all teacher laptops sometime this fall, we are suspending the purchase of any teacher laptops this fiscal year and likely next year as well. And because we seek to continue into Year Two of this rolling student computer renewal program, we asked the capital, we asked the Board of Trustees, I didn't update my notes, we asked that the Board of Trustees, we asked for their approval in the continuation of this device laptop refresh program. Thank you.
I think we're all on board with the refresh, so we don't have a lot of questions. Dr. Nicolet, and then trustee maybe?
Thank you, I'm definitely on board. I do have a question about the charging stations that are in the schools. Is the school responsible for purchasing those, or is that part of this refresh?
Outside of the refresh, it won't be the school's responsibility. We've identified a federal grant opportunity in order to fulfill, I think it's approximately nine, we looked at the existing inventory of carts in the district, and then we asked schools how many additional carts they would require. And so we balanced all that out, and we came up with, I think it's about 900 carts are still needed district-wide. And so we've identified a federal grant opportunity in order to fulfill that. And so, and there's a lot that's wrapped up into that, too, because we have to wire each of the carts for the power supplies for each of the computers, so we're also asking for funding for that, because we don't have the personnel. It takes approximately two and a half hours to wire a cart, so multiplied over 900, we don't want to place that burden on the school, and we don't have the personnel for it either, so we're going to bundle it all together and acquire the carts and distribute them to schools.
Great news, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee maybe?
Thank you, President Taylor. I've gotten a few questions on this. You touched on it briefly, it's just one question. Can you just do a little deeper dive? The laptops that are issued to the students, they can't view inappropriate material on them, correct? Can you, for the record, can you do a little deeper dive on that, how that's prevented?
Yeah, absolutely. We accept federal funding, and so we have to align ourselves with the Children's Internet Protection Act. And so in order to fulfill that, we have to have an internet content filter on our technology services. And so we do that in two ways. We filter on the network itself, the network controls and the firewall, and the controller that's part of the firewall helps exclude harmful material. In addition to that, any device that is used, that's a district device, image by us, owned by us, asset tagged by us, that is in use, whether it's on our network, on campus, or removed from campus and used in the home, all of those internet requests, all that traffic is routed through our assets here in the district. So if they, if, say, a student or a teacher is off-campus and types in ESPN.com, that request is routed through our network and then back out to the general internet. So it's filtered both on the network and on the device itself, no matter where the device exists.
What's wrong with ESPN?
ESPN is not filtered. I was trying to use an appropriate site, especially during March, as everybody updates their brackets, right?
Right. Those are educational opportunities. Those are educational opportunities, percentages.
The conversation.
You know, I mean, I think that's important. Colors of uniforms, art. Just, that's a little stretch. Okay, sorry. Okay, anything else on this? Okay. All right, I think we're good. We're going to go on to Part Three. Part Three of this, this is the updates from transportation. Transportation facilities are ghetto transportations. Not that our transportation is ghetto. I mean, follow me. That's what it's called. It's actually named after a person. It was also not ghetto, but he was.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Again, Adam Circe for the record. We're going to go through this briefly. This is
That's a great word right now, Mr. Circe.
A modernization project associated with our central transportation yard. This is an overview of what we're going to cover here today. This is a little bit of an orientation slide. The district owns and operates three active bus yards, generally known as the South, North, and Central Yards. The ghetto facility is known as the Central Site, and that's what we're going to be talking about here today. We've made a variety of improvements to our other sites within the last five years. This is master planning for the future, and really, that Central Site is the one that's most in need and most, I guess, ripe, ready for major guess, ripe, ready for major additional investments. It's also our largest site, and houses many of our maintenance personnel and administrative personnel associated with the Transportation Department. But this is a shot from inside one of the mechanics bays at the Central Yard. All of these deficiencies, so we've recently conducted a significant study and master plan on all of our transportation yard facilities to try to determine the nature and timing of needed investments, and zoomed in in more detail on the specific nature of the needed investments at the Central Yard. So there you can see an incomplete list of significant deficiencies at the Central Transportation Yard that this team has been striving to develop solutions for. Sort of a summary of what is intended or what has been preliminarily scoped for this project at the Central Yard would basically be to reconstruct all of the buildings on the camp, on the property. These are some 45-plus-year-old metal buildings that are dramatically beyond their useful life and no longer of adequate size or operational adequacy for the Transportation Department there. We've also got some environmental issues. We've got underground fuel storage tanks, which are not only mechanically failing from time to time, but represent a significant environmental hazard for the district. So that's something important that we look to improve upon in any project going forward. So I won't go through the rest of those opportunities, but certainly significant need exists at this facility. This is an existing conditions aerial image. Just to give you your bearings, if you get off, I believe at Vista Boulevard or in between Sparks and Vista, it's on the south side of I-80, kind of where the Alamo and all the truck stops and all of those types of businesses are located. This is on Kleppi Lane, if you've ever been in that area. And you can kind of see in the upper right-hand corner what is now a storm drain, but what was only just a few years ago, the open channel of the North Truckee Drain, which historically would back up and cause tremendous flooding at that site. Within the last several years, the City of Sparks and Truckee Meadows Flood Agency have put that into a culvert. And so that's one aspect of what makes the timing appropriate for the school district to make additional investments in this facility.
A question on that?
Oh, yeah, please, go ahead.
Is that a flood plain? Like a 100-year flood?
It is. On this slide, so previously it was, yes, it is. This next slide is representing where we're proposing to rebuild the new buildings. You can see, they used to be kind of on the left-hand side of this slide. The topography up there, the space where you're showing, we're showing this yellow footprint is higher. So we'd actually be moving the buildings on that site to higher ground. It still presents a small percent chance risk of flooding throughout that entire area, really. But it elevates those underground storage tanks, fuel storage tanks above ground, and constructs a new, modern, appropriate facility on higher ground as well. The buses can readily be relocated, and you can see really what's proposed there primarily is just repaving and safety improvements relative to the primary function of the bus yard for staff and bus parking, but then that building itself, including major maintenance bays, office administration, dispatch, and many other functions. So this is just a conceptual design. It's maybe best illustrated with this graphic, but you can see, you can follow the text on the right-hand side with various features of this proposed building. Again, metal building construction, but appropriate in size and scale, informed by the operations team in transportation, in consultation with our Capital Projects Team and our architects, the Collaborative Design Group. This is just a concept sketch at this point. And really, what we're here to discuss today is the authorization of a budget or funding for this design phase only. This is recommended at a level of 2.5 million. That will cover us through the completion of design through into bidding. That's anticipated to occur throughout the rest of this calendar year and early into 2023. And then we would potentially be back in front of the board to present any next steps related to construction. So just to kind of reiterate that, this was a dated slide as well, but pending design budget approval, we'd come back to the board with a design contract and have that potentially authorized. And then we'd be back in the spring of 2023 with project updates and potential requests for next steps or actions. So that's the conclusion of the information on this element. And then we've kind of got those three items for action up next.
Okay, and they're actually together, unless the board chooses to separate. We've had the presentations and had a little bit of conversation, but I think we followed it pretty closely. Let's see if we have any public comment on this agenda item. Okay, thank you, JJ. So let's bring it back here to the Board. Any further questions, discussions, or we're certainly working our way towards a motion, Trustee Church?
Yeah, I will try to be brief. I believe it's Attachment A, if I'm correct on this, that talks about some of the spending. And I just, I think I'm on the exact same page here. Talks about bond administration, 3.5 million. Do you know what I'm talking about here?
Attachment A, it was the presentation that we have.
Okay.
So we're trying to find it.
I'm looking at the wrong thing, then. Yeah, I'll withdraw that.
Okay, okay. Further questions, discussions? If not, looking for a motion on those three items as a part of the Major Projects Program E. Okay, motion by Trustee Rodriguez, is there a second? Second by Trustee Minneto. Seeing no further discussion, excuse me. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Right, the motion carries. At the record show, it is unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Circe, and to the staff. Three projects we can move forward with, thank you. All right, now we're down to, do you have any general, I think we're down to, yeah, general public comment?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
Hello, this is a general public comment, so.
Get your mind to.
Here we go. Okay, here we go. So I wanted to say thank you, but thank you for like doing some stuff for special meaning. And I know last week, he wanted, Jeffrey wanted to talk, candidate to disclose all the program donation. And so I can give you advice from Jeff Church. So if you want to like see a candidate from a donation, just go to nevadasacresstatesweb dot com, and then here we go. And I wanted to say, I came here aboard me to drive support option to, because civil inflation costs, that's really difficult for construction and building. And I know you guys, you guys don't have money to build for the Davis Smith CTA Academy, that's very difficult for the family, and for the students who are graduated from class of 2028, and weren't able to go on Davis Smith CTA Academy. So I will say thank you for that. And I will leave this meeting to see, and this has been, and all of was coming up in a few days, so never going to worry. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. That's all I have. Okay, thank you, JJ. We'll bring it back here to the table. There's no further public comments, so we're going to adjourn the special meeting. And we don't have another, because it's special. So, all right, our meeting is adjourned.